At this time, I would like to call the February sixteenth meeting, welcome you to the February sixteenth meeting of the Jefferson County Board of Education. Before I start on our work for the evening, I have a statement that I would like to read that we did at the last meeting also. Pursuant to the adopted policy of this board and Robert's Rules of Order govern the way we conduct this meeting. This means that board members are expected to abide by the parliamentary procedures and customs as outlined and defined by Robert's rules. The public also expects the board to be an example to our students. The board should be an example for how policymaking bodies act in a way. Vigorous but respectful debate is expected. Our students are watching. As members, we shall all act in good faith so that when we disagree, we will not be disagreeable. Because of this, I will do my best to maintain and enforce the following parliamentary standards. Number one, remarks from members should be confined to the issue and question. Number two, members should refrain from attacking the motives of other members and from the use of inappropriate or vulgar language. Number three, remarks should always be addressed to the chair and not to other members. Number four, questions directed from a member to another member are to be directed to the chair. At that point, the chair will then ask the member if he or she will yield to a question. We should strive to use the formal names and titles of members whenever possible. Thank you. At this point, then, I will make a recommendation. Is there a recommendation for the approval of the meeting agenda?
Move back, Craig.
Did you make the motion, Mr. Craig, to amend the agenda to put the consent calendar before the work session? Did I hear you say that?
No, I was, you called for a motion on the agenda and I just made the motion. I'm sorry.
Okay, well, let, let me correct how I called for the motion. That's my fault.
And I'll withdraw.
Is there a motion at this time to amend the agenda to move the consent calendar to before the work session? Is there a motion?
I'll call those.
A second. Okay, Dr. Chris and Ms. Duncan, thank you. So I'll call for the vote at this time. Board Member McIntosh.
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Schul.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Board Member Duncan.
Yes.
Thank you. Board Member Marshall.
Yes.
Thank you. Board Member Craig.
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Chris.
Yes.
Thank you. Diane Porter. Yes, it's unanimous. Next item, is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda as amended? Guess that's what we just did.
All moves.
Do I have to do that again, Kevin?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so board, uh, board member, uh, Cole made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Thank you. Ms. McIntosh. Calling for the vote at this time, starting with Ms. McIntosh.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Dr. Schul.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Ms. Duncan.
Yes.
Thank you. Board Member Marshall.
Yes.
Thank you. Board Member Craig.
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Chris.
Yes.
Thank you. Diane Porter. Yes. Is there a recommendation for the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting? Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the February second and February ninth meetings?
Marshall.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Seconded by.
Craig.
Thank you, Mr. Craig, calling for the vote. Board Member McIntosh.
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Schul.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Board Member Duncan.
Yes.
Thank you. Board Member Marshall.
Yes.
Thank you. Board Member Craig.
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Chris.
Yes.
Thank you. Diane Porter. Yes. It's unanimous. At this time, I have had no request to pull any items down from the consent calendar. So is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Marshall.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Seconded by.
Oh.
Okay, that was two at one. Help me, somebody.
Ms. Duncan had it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Duncan.
Thank you.
So because we did it that way, Dr. Schul, I'll start the vote with you. Dr. Schul.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Ms. McIntosh.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Duncan.
Yes.
Thank you. Board Member Marshall.
Yes.
Thank you. Board Member Craig.
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Chris.
Yes.
Thank you. Diane Porter. Yes. We do, uh, before we move on, we have some tabbits this evening. Uh, Dr. Cole, I think there are two envelopes.
Yes, thank you, Chair Porter. Item number one five six on bid ID seven nine two seven for instructional and office supplies line item, and the item is awarded to Quill. Q U I L L. Secondly, items number four one six and four eight zero on bid ID seven nine two seven for instructional and office supplies line item, and the items are awarded to complete printer source.
Thank you very much. Our next item is a work session before I turn that over to Dr. Polio. I would like to make a statement before turning our meeting over to Dr. Polio. I would like to emphasize that the board is engaged in fact finding and that a vote will be called for at a future meeting. Any vote right now would be premature. We are dealing with what may be the most complex issue of our time in public service. We all bring different ideas and thoughts to this table. Let's proceed in a manner that recognizes those differences, celebrates common ground, and always seeks to find solutions that benefit our students. So at this point, Dr. Polio, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chair Porter and board members. I appreciate you giving us the time today to present to you a work session on a potential return to school plan and giving you all the information that you need. As you know, last week, we had assistant superintendents and principals available to answer lots of questions, and I think they did a fantastic job of showing their hard work to prepare for return to school. And today we have a great group of professionals here that have been working obviously around the clock to ensure that we are ready to go when the Board of Education does give the green light to return to school. And I appreciate all of their hard work and being here tonight to really talk about what we are doing. And I know it's, it's extremely challenging, as Ms. Porter said. There is no doubt, the larger the district, the harder it is to pull together in-person school following guidelines presented by our return to school guidance from the Kentucky Department of Education. But we know that we are able to do it and we are confident that we are able to do it. This staff right now is working diligently to ensure that we have, and our schools are, successful at NTI, return to school plans, summer programming where we know we're going to have to give thousands of kids additional learning opportunities. So I don't think there's a time ever where this staff has worked harder to ensure that we are ready to go and meet all of these major challenges as we move forward. Over the past couple of weeks, I've told our team and I've told our principals that here in JCPS, no one has ever had to bring a plan back to school during a pandemic. And obviously, we hope that we are the only ones that ever have to do it and we don't have to face this again. But I know this team is up to that challenge and we are to, here to show you tonight the plan that we have in place and answer your questions. We believe this is a comprehensive plan that just months and months of planning have been put into this, and we look forward to implementing this plan and seeing our children again. So we're excited about that. So tonight, we're going to provide you this plan, and as you know, Thursday night, we will have a town hall forum as we have had before to follow up on that, and then we will continue to discuss with the chair and vice chair when a, a vote might be taken and the board members have the information that they need. Also excited to report that declining numbers in the state of the, or excuse me, the Commonwealth of Kentucky is reported by the governor today. I did check right before we came down. Jefferson County is in orange now for the first time since October. As you know, when we went into red in October at twenty-four point nine per one hundred thousand, so right below that benchmark for a red county, and we're now into an orange county. So clearly, we hope to continue to see that trend in the coming weeks. The governor reported today a statewide positivity rate of six point five eight percent. So we are continuing to see that decline. So if that continues, it's very positive news for us. And obviously ensures getting back to school, especially on that proposed timeline that we've talked about with the second vaccine, which was scheduled to begin at the end of this week. We will have to see how the closure because of weather could bump us back a day or two. But we do believe that with that second dose of the vaccine beginning at the latest by this time next week, we can move forward with that plan quickly and any, a potential return to school plan based on the vaccine. As you know, every one of these, we have talked, our guiding principles, health and safety, high quality instruction, flexibility, equity around our decision-making, accurate and timely communication, and community trust. And we will continue to use these guiding principles as I believe this Board of Education has done from the very beginning. A little bit on CDC guidance and how that translates into state guidance. And so over the past week, we have gotten several rounds of new CDC guidance. This was from February eleventh. More CDC guidance came out on Friday. And so the CDC guidance goes to the state, the Kentucky Department of Education then updates their guidance to our districts. So we do expect to have more guidance based on the most recent CDC guidance that was issued late Friday afternoon that we have been working on. But as you see, the CDC guidance here, it's very important. I think this was one of the most important steps that they took in the guidance for our back-to-school plan. And so as you can see, I'll, I'll just read the state guidance because that's our governing body that we get this from. Individuals who have received a full series of the COVID nineteen vaccination that experienced close contact with an individual infected with COVID nineteen and remains asymptomatic after exposure are not required to quarantine if their contact is more than fourteen days and fewer than ninety days from their final dose of the COVID nineteen vaccine. That greatly changed our task and our challenge as, as we move forward with the CDC saying, and to our state and our state giving us guidance, saying that we no longer have to quarantine any staff members that become exposed to a positive case, which has been nationally a major issue when it comes to staffing. So we were very pleased to see that. I think that was a huge change for us moving forward in the way that we can present the guidance. For the rest of this time, we want to walk you through every aspect of our return to school plan. We want to talk to you about the great things we've done, and we also want to talk to you about the challenges that we still face. We want to be open and honest about those challenges and the way we are dealing with those challenges. And we know by that time, after that second vaccine, several weeks after that, we're looking at potentially mid-March for that elementary school opening that we would be after that vaccination period where we would not have to quarantine those that have been fourteen days past their second dose. So I'm real excited to bring you this plan tonight and answer any questions that you have. And I believe we are going to start this evening with a video so you can see what a day looks like with, uh, following the guidance.
Jefferson County Public Schools is looking forward to our students safely returning to school buildings. Let's take a look at what the school day might look like for those students getting back to in-person classes. As students wait at the bus stop, they should social distance. Parents or guardians must attest their student doesn't have a temperature greater than one hundred point four or have any COVID nineteen symptoms before arriving at the bus stop. As students board the bus, they must continue to wear a mask. A mask will be provided if they don't have one. Each student will have an assigned seat to improve contact tracing if a student becomes ill. Windows will be open, weather permitting, and masks will be kept on during the entire ride to school. Hand sanitizer will be available on each school bus and every bus will be sanitized after each run. Arriving at school, every student and staff member will have their temperature checked before entering the school building. Inside, masks will continue to cover the nose and mouth, and everyone will see reminders to social distance with markings on the hallway floors and signs on the walls. No large groups will be allowed to congregate in the hallways. Hand sanitizer will be located throughout the building, including each classroom, and students will be given ample opportunities to wash their hands during the day. In classrooms, students will have assigned seats and desks or tables will be arranged to support safety guidelines. Students will be encouraged to stay in their seats. Masks will continue to be worn by both the students and the teacher. For breakfast and lunch, students will go to the cafeteria and walk through the food service line. JCPS Nutrition Services staff members will be wearing masks and gloves as they serve healthy meals to students. Some schools will have enough room to have all students eat in the cafeteria and still maintain proper social distancing. Others may have children eating in other areas like outside, in the gymnasium, or in open classrooms. As students leave the building for the day, they'll continue to follow the same health and safety guidelines, keeping on their mask, going to their school bus, and then sitting on their assigned seat. With no one in the building, custodial staff members can clean and sanitize the school overnight, preparing for another day of in-person learning.
Thanks to our communication team for putting that together. We have a group of experts now that are going to weigh in on the different components of the plan. I'll put it over to Chief of Schools, Robert.
Thank you, Dr. Polio, and thank you, board members, for having me again here. I am blessed to be here again to provide an update to the board and, and just as importantly, to our community regarding our school reopening plans. The goal is to provide you with the information you, you need to help you and parents make the most informed decision possible going forward. My position and the start of my position coincided with the news of vaccine coming to JCPS teachers. And so since then, I've hit the ground running, really pushing our assistant suits to take a fine-to-come to the school plans over the past three weeks. So these five components are, when you dig into those school plans that Dr. Polio will share with you at the end of this presentation, are, are going to be in every school plan in greater detail. But here are the big parts. For breakfast and lunch, for this component, maintaining social distancing as, as required by K D E regulations. Assigned seats for better contact tracing. Reduce the number of students seating in the cafeteria using other available areas for eating. And I mentioned this last week, every nook and cranny of the building should be used when considering breakfast and lunch. Offer multiple options for serving meals that may include the following: grab-and-go breakfast as students are entering the building and kiosk meal services for lunches. The second component you'll see is arrival and dismissal. Upon arrival, every student will be processed through temperature checks for screening and exclusion. Hand sanitizer will be available for students and staff in multiple, multiple, multiple spots throughout the building. Temperature scans are not required before boarding the bus for dismissal. And as you heard from the video from Renee, parents are to attest that they have checked the temperature and they're not placing kids on the bus with the, with the temperature more than a hundred point four. Students have been identified with a fever during the school day would not be transported home on a bus with other students. For our common areas, another component that you'll see in, in detail in our school plans. Social distancing will be enforced in all areas of the campus, including high-volume areas where congestion is likely to occur, including hallways, stairwells. You'll see directional signs, so students are going one direction, going down the steps, and students are going another direction, going up the steps. You can, and last week you saw in your choice plans, the total directional changes of their steps. So the, these plans are laid out in every school plan. Consistent messaging will be placed throughout the building and the campus, including entries, exits, to follow social distancing where masks and practice proper hand washing and respiratory hygiene. They will be age-appropriate, so the same, the size you see in elementary will look quite differently in middle and high school, easier to understand for our primary and our younger kids. A teacher-directed activity schedule, better known as recess schedule, will be created that limits how many classes are on the playground at one time. And then, this is new, starting with elementary schools, and thanks for feedback from you guys last week or week before. Each building will have one bottle, water bottle filling station on each floor in the school. Most of our water fountains can be retrofitted with a conversion kit. So, and if you've been in, like Planet Fitness, just a little automatic, so you can fill, fill that water bottle up, no touch, no mouth on water fountain. So our, our kids will have access to drinking water. Also in common areas, an entry-exit plan for employees will be established to maintain social distancing during employee temperature checks and signing procedures. Safety is just not about our students. We are definitely making sure our staff and, and all employees are safe and healthy when we return to school, if we return to school. Restrooms will be provided, an adequate supply of liquid soap, paper towels, and toilet paper. And we have a rapid response team on deck when things like that start to run out. Hand sanitizers with sixty percent alcohol or more will be available throughout the school. High-contact surface will be frequently cleaned throughout the school day. And Donald will give you an update on how we'll make sure we have the custodial staff there to, to take care of that. In classrooms, teachers will be told which students have medical waivers on file that permit non-wearing, not wearing a mask. A process will be established for ongoing distribution of P P E for staff and students who arrive without mask and throughout the day for those who need additional masks due to loss, soiling, et cetera. Leave them in the car. I've done it, and I'm sure many of you have done it. We're going to have extra P P E on deck for our, our students and our staff. Sounds will be posted to remind students that masks are required to be worn at all times unless students are actively eating or drinking or unless they have a medical waiver. Staff will be issued a clear plastic face shield. So important, especially for our kids developing language skills, for them to see how the mouth should move. So really key to our, our primary and early elementary students. Guidance on enforcement of new safety protocol has been established. And lastly, health room and isolation room. A health room, isolation room will be designated to isolate students who are ill. Adequate health supplies and P P E will be available. Nurse practitioners will be available via phone for telehealth assessments of students. And lastly, working with, we are working with contractor to hire nurses or medical assistants for each and every school. And in addition, I would like to add to, in addition to that, our assistant suits who are going through the plans with and these components with principals, we now have a collaborative reopening committee with our J C T A members who will be also looking at these plans. And, and I just know from experience, there's no better innovators and resilient professionals than, than teachers. And so once our teachers get a hold of some of these plans, they will definitely be able to help brainstorm and fine-tune any, any gaps that may be available. So with that, I'll pass it to Kim Chevalier, who will give some E C E guidance.
Thank you, Robert. And as you know, there are many students in our E C E program with complex needs or medically fragile students who require one-to-one assistance with healthcare, diapering, physical transfers, and feeding. Our schools are giving special considerations for extra sanitation and specialized P P E equipment to ensure that our students receive their I E P service and that we minimize the risk of exposure. Such equipment as face shields, disposable gowns, shoe coverings, gloves, and extra disinfecting wipes are going to be readily available for all the E C E staff. And Ms. Chris Perkins will be reviewing specific items later in the presentation, so you'll be able to see those. And in collaboration with Eva Stone and her team, we specifically broke down the P P E needs based on the Kentucky Guidance and Safety Expectations and Best Practices. So these first five slides that you'll be seeing, they break down the P P E with assisting with hygiene, toileting, the feeding tubes, G tubes, medication, and hand-over-hand assistance. So it shows you specifically what they need in the classrooms. And then for our related service personnel, obviously our O Ts, P Ts, S L Ps, visually impaired, deaf and hard of hearing staff, they provide both one-on-one assistance and they travel between classrooms and schools. So we also have an abundance of P P E available to them. And in addition, we provided guidelines on best practices to minimize multiple transitions and contact tracing. You can exceed an example of our specialized equipment for S L Ps, their clear face mask. So that's what they look like. And just as a reminder that all I E Ps must be fully implemented at all times, but I can assure you, JCPS has been diligent about having extra P P E readily available and guidance to ensure our staff and students' safety. And in addition, our E C E team will continue to provide live support for questions and work collaboratively with Chris Perkins to ensure that our equipment is in stock and ready to go. So, Ms. Perkins, you're up.
Thanks, Kim. Hopefully you can hear me this evening. I want to talk a little bit about ventilation. That, that's been a hot topic with, with a lot of questions that have come up. And hopefully we'll be able to clear up some of those concerns this evening. I'm fortunate tonight, I brought with me several of members of the operations team, each an expert in their respective departments. So you'll hear from a few of them here shortly. But I'd like to start with, with some information that we received from the Environmental Health Supervisor from Louisville Metro Government, Mr. Patrick Rich. And he said that air and HEPA filters do not get small enough to a small enough micron to remove the virus from the air. Unfortunately, the virus isn't airborne, but most filters will remove droplets that carry the virus. Most filters will reduce, will remove the droplets that carry the virus. The key is to cycle as much air out of the building as quickly as possible and to recycle as little air as possible. So in a nutshell, what that's saying is that the COVID nineteen particles, it's point three microns in size. And that's too small for even the HEPA filters to catch. So the air purifiers and air scrubbers and that, and the key things that the cycle is much, we see a lot of, and building as quickly as possible. Quite been about, most recently, are not effective at catching those, those COVID particles. What they really do is circulate the air around the room. It'll clean the air, but it's going to continue to circulate the same particles in the air. So what, what can we do? The key really is for us to cycle as much air out of the building as possible, and really, there's two ways to do that. Either we keep our dampers open on our air handlers to bring in fresh air, or we keep windows open as much as possible to circulate that air in. And so we're fortunate tonight, I brought with me Mr. James Jones. He is a specialist in charge of our mechanical maintenance shop, one of which includes the H V A C department as well. James is a mechanical engineer, and he's going to speak to you a little bit about our H V A C systems. James?
Thank you, Chris. Good, good evening, everyone. I hope you can hear me. All right. Let's start out about our HVAC shop. We have a very robust program that was predated this. We currently, before we start up a chiller or a boiler, we do an inspection checklist. And it's a detailed checklist to make sure that it's running in waters, that all parts of the system is functioning. And that, that goes back many years in JCPS. We also have cooling towers. Those also a part of our cooling systems. We actually look at those on a monthly basis. We test everything from the water acidity levels, make sure we don't have any bacteria growing in the water. You know, we do a lot of health checks on that. I sit my guys around, starting a couple of months back and we started to check all our outdoor intake dampers. That was on classroom units, rooftop units. And we're basically inspecting those and sure they were functioning, that they were all opening, functioning, or they were in an open position. So they would function. So we can get the max amount of fresh air into the building. We also utilize in JCPS a very sophisticated data monitoring system, a digital control system. And that system basically, we can set temperatures remotely, we can monitor children's filters. We can monitor air handler filters and that ensures to us that a school is working and functioning when nobody is really in the building. So we basically have continuous monitoring through the evenings. We really rely on people within the building to give us a, get us a quicker warning. On a system than waiting till a unit totally shuts off that something is not working properly. We additionally right now is we're setting up most building unfortunately, Dr. Polio, I guess we didn't get you yet. Is that we're, we're running the buildings from three AM in the morning to eleven PM at night. And that's basically so we can do things like you hear about dilution, dilution and air exchange rates, which is very important. Basically an air exchange rate is an air change rate basically is, is how many times in an hour do you remove all the air out the room and you bring fresh air in? So basically by running your system longer, you're actually removing more and more contaminants out of environments. We also have been around through the plant operators who they've all went around and respected windows in those buildings where we know we don't have automated systems to bring in outside air. We need to raise windows. Our plant operators is also one of our line of defense and HVAC units. They do all our filter changes. They monitor belts on air handlers for us to make sure we're actually moving air freely through the system and the system is functioning. And over the left there, you can actually see an air, air filter log there where you can see he's went through and he's changing his, his filters in all of the units. And they do that every year and we do it three times a year. And it's a big deal to us because if you clog an air filter. We immediately drop airflow and you'll start to have people in their environment start to say it's either cold in here or it's hot because we're not moving air into the room. Yeah, they did this at winter break and they're already, I know a couple of weeks ago, they started offering filters for what would be the spring break change. I had custodial staffs also go through into a lot of our classroom units to start pulling them open and remove the debris out of them, wipe them down and sanitize the insides of them. We run any issues a lot. If you get a cold, gets dirty, the functionality of your system will die too if you get a dirty cold. And that's a big term everybody talk about is SRA. It's just a term for a group of engineers who started out in the early twentieth century. They, they make all of the standards that you see the CDC and everybody is referring to. So basically JCPS, all of their classrooms are designed to make their units give you ten CFM of fresh air into the room per person. So if you had ten people in a room, you need a hundred CFM of fresh air. If you look at a spec on one of our unit vents on the wall, you're probably going to see we accept that amount of CFMs coming into the space. We can average anywhere from three fifty to eight hundred on the classroom and they're a lot higher when you get on the rooftop of the units. That next one there about outdoor air intake vents are designed to be open during the winter. It's basically remaining open. So you're always pulling fresh air. We go to what we call a minimum level of the damper in the summer times. But we're probably going to manipulate that more to get more fresh air. That there's a fine line between if you pull in too much human air into the space, you will make everybody uncomfortable in the space. But to get more fresh air again, we're, we're going to manipulate it and make our dampers go more wider open in summer times. The winter times, we're basically just, we're basically, we're free to do based on what the outside environment is with the dampers. You know, we produce anywhere from six air exchanges to twenty, I believe. I read a document that came out of KDE. It was forwarded to me recently that the CDC is recommending two air, air changes rate per hour. They actually flush out ninety nine, eight percent of your contaminants in a room, which is basically what a helper filter claims. So basically we do anywhere from sixty to twenty in most of our space. And if you pull windows open, you're going to do a lot more than that. I'll turn it back.
Thanks, James. I wanted to talk a little bit this evening, just about the personal protective equipment and where, where we stand with that. As a district, we spent the last several months preparing not just to acquire sufficient PPE. But also creating a system for how we can distribute that and to make sure we have the right kind. And so I'm going to go through a few numbers and examples and some pictures with you as well, just to give you some context as, as to what we have for our schools. And so the first thing you'll see vinyl powder free gloves, these come in boxes of a hundred. We've got over twelve thousand boxes. And so multiply that by a hundred and you're looking at one point two million vinyl gloves we have in our inventory. Personal protective equipment as far as face shields go, this is an added layer for, for, for protection. And mitigating the, the spread of the virus in addition to wearing a cloth mask for those who have some type of waiver. That prohibits them from wearing a mask. This is another option using conjunction with a mask. It's a really effective mitigation strategy. We have over forty, forty eight thousand of those already in inventory. Digital thermometers, again, these are digital touchless thermometers. Most of you have probably had one used on your forehead at this point. Again, we've got over sixteen hundred of those in our reserves in the warehouse. Adult sized masks, and just to clarify, this is for adult, like employees, staff members, as well as our, our students in grade six through twelve. And so you'll see numbers over there that aren't an exaggeration, just the N ninety five dust particle respirators. We've got a hundred and seventy six, a hundred and seventy six thousand of those in our inventory. The disposable mask for adults, over one point seven million. The cloth mask for our adults, we've got seven hundred and fifty thousand and change. And then the, the mask with the clear panel, Kim Chevalier showed some earlier. Those are for our speech and language support staff and students. We've got over two thousand of those as well. So in total, just for like adult size or adult employees and students, grade six, we've got two point six million masks in our inventory. When we look at more of the youth sized mask, we have those kind of split up into two categories. For primary students from early childhood up through second grade and then our intermediate grades, third through fifth. And again, you'll see some, some substantial numbers, the disposable type for primary, over six hundred and ninety thousand. The disposable for intermediate, seven hundred and ninety seven thousand. Then when you look at cloth washable, reusable mask for the primary, a hundred and ninety five thousand. And then for the intermediate grades, four hundred and eighty six thousand. And then students needing the, the, the special mask with a clear panel, we've got almost ten thousand of those. So that, that's, you know, two point one million masks just for our primary intermediate students. And this does not even include our donated masks. For the gowns, for, for special needs classrooms, we have two different types. We have disposable and then cloth reusable or washable gowns. We have nineteen and a half thousand of the disposable gowns and nine thousand of the cloth reusable gowns. We have head covers and shoe covers, again, for those special needs situations, over three, three and a half thousand shoe covers. And over four hundred and ninety five head covers. We've also ordered over a hundred, or we've ordered a hundred thousand of the tri fold sneeze guards that sit on top of desk. These are specifically going to be provided for students with those mask waivers, just as an added later layer of protection for them. And just to kind of give you an idea, just some perspective on how much PPE we have, these, these are photos from our, our distribution warehouse over at CD Young off Critton and Drive. And they're, they're labeled. So the boxes you see here are just boxes upon boxes of those clear plastic face shields. Again, on the left, you'll see the blue, those are our disposable gowns. On the right, those are our cloth washable, reusable gowns. These are those vinyl gloves that you saw. Again, we've got rows and boxes and boxes of those. This is all hand sanitizer, anywhere from I think two point nine ounce bottles to sixteen ounce to thirty two ounce bottles. Some are the squirt type and some are the pump dispensers. These are the disposable adult PPE masks or adult sized masks, sorry. These are the N ninety five mask. Again, we've got a pretty substantial inventory of those as well, as well as the, the mask with the clear panels. These are our student, intermediate, primary sized disposable masks. Cloth masks, again, we've got so many of those, we've got them stored in a couple of different places in the warehouse. Additional mask with the clear panels, those are for the students. Shoe covers, gloves. And all those numbers I, I mentioned earlier, did not even include the donated mask. Three hundred and twenty eight thousand from the Ford next generation learning or learner's donation. And then Kentucky and Packaging Solutions in partnership with the Game Changers Group recently donated another hundred and thirty two thousand. And then just recently, the Mask for Kids Initiative donated another two hundred and forty thousand. So that's, that's seven hundred and forty thousand masks that have been donated in addition to what we've already ordered. All those stacks of orange boxes you see there on the right, that's all the, the disinfecting wipes we've got available for our staff. And then there's been several questions on when are schools going to get their PPE? And so what we did, we started working on this back in the fall. And I don't know if you could tell from the pictures, but we have skids or pallets, if you will, that are loaded up for each school, every single school in our district. And even the special programs that exist within schools. And so they, what we've created is put together as a back to school PPE kit. And that, those are just basic needs, masks, gloves. Disinfecting wipes, hand sanitizer, face shields, all that stuff we just went through. And so these are already packaged, they're wrapped up in big Saran wrap, they're labeled by school. Here on the screen, you see a couple of aisles lined up and down the warehouse at CD Young to have each school's PPE kits on them. I think you'll see Portland and Fairdale and Newburgs on this slide. And on the next slide, I believe there's a few more Roosevelt Perry, Ackerly, King, Mail, Grant, J Graham Brown School. So again, we've got one of these all ready to go for every single school. Once, once we've determined when we're going back to school, these will be distributed for schools to receive those. And this is just what we have in reserve. So all those numbers that I went through earlier, that, that's what we have in reserve in our warehouse. That's not counting what we've already assembled for these kits to provide schools, just to get the school year started. And again, rows and aisle and like, if you walked in our warehouse, it, it's a jungle gym of just boxes and stacks and rows and aisles of PPE. So we were prepared. We already have a highly effective and efficient distribution system. You know, we have our own internal mail service with Pony, running multiple times throughout the week. Again, those, those pallets have been loaded onto skids so that they can easily be moved into buildings and dropped off. And we'll switch gears and I'll kick it over to Donald Robinson, our executive administrator of property management, maintenance and support services.
Thank you, Chris. I'm going to discuss cleaning and the environment. Use of the disinfectants approved by the Environmental Protection Agency, which is the EPA. We're going to implement a robust cleaning and disinfecting program to prevent.
Chris, I think Donald froze. You might have to jump in and take that, please.
For a second, I was starting to panic. I've got two different devices around. Okay. So let me talk to you a little bit just about cleaning the environment and Donald rejoins as he can kind of chime in. So we have pretty regimented cleaning routines that are already established for our housekeeping. And in addition to that, based on the, the need to, to ensure that those high contact surfaces are hit more often and that we're continually cleaning throughout the day. We've made sure that we have clear procedures in place for our custodians. All of our disinfectants are on what's called a list N of chemicals that we use. For those approved by the EPA. Our, our regimen already includes, like I said, procedures for cleaning throughout the day. But then also in the evenings, deep cleaning and disinfecting of those, not just high contact surfaces, but all surfaces. We provided each school a battery powered sprayer. And so you've seen a lot of those. I think you saw one in the video earlier. Those things basically create a mist or an aerosol out of, out of tablets or there's recommended chemicals that you can put in those that, that spray the disinfectant. And it's, it is very effective for like a rapid response, especially in the event that we're, we get concerned that an area has been exposed to someone with the virus. So part of our mitigation strategies are not just to continue with our current regimen, but also additional equipment and then additional rounds of cleaning. And additionally, we provided disinfecting wipes, not just to classrooms, but also the offices and the health rooms as well. Donald, I don't know if you're back, if there's anything you want to add to that. If not, we can move on.
I believe.
Right. And then exclusion, state guidelines say that children and staff should not come to school. If they have a temperature of a hundred point four or above, new cough, vomiting, diarrhea or a new rash. Students should also stay home from school if they have been in contact with someone who is diagnosed as currently having COVID nineteen. Temperature checks will be done as students and staff come into the, into the building. And again, parents, guardians of bus riders attest that they would not send a child on the bus who has a temperature of one hundred point four or higher. Remember, it's a community wide effort. Working with contract with company to hire additional medical staff to make sure each school has coverage for contact tracing. A school will report a positive case of COVID to JCPS Health Services Team. Will work with the local health department to contact those who may need to self quarantine. For those identified as close contact to a case, the length of time for self quarantine is usually fourteen days after the last exposure. Is people who are diagnosed, so if you're diagnosed with COVID nineteen, they are usually out of school for ten days beyond the start of symptoms or a positive test. Now that can vary and is very dependent on how sick someone is and other circumstances within the family. Your child can return to school when the local health department or the student's provider provides clearance documentation for the school record. A negative COVID nineteen test is not required for a student to return to school. And here are all the examples of training that are available for all staff. Some strategic ECE training, strategic SCM team training, bus drivers. And our nutrition services training has already been completed. Dr. Polio, I think it's up to you to bring us on.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Robert. And so we wanted to talk about some of the challenges that we face and, and be open about those. And you all have expressed over the past few meetings, some concern about these. And we wanted to talk about each of the following three areas. Transportation staff, custodial staff, and then staffing overall. As far as accommodations and those things that, that you've been asked about. And so first of all, transportation, a challenge for us over the past probably five to 10 years has been hiring enough drivers and keeping enough drivers. So this is not a new challenge for us. But as you can see, I won't read those off to you right now. We have nine hundred and ten routes. On a daily basis before we have call in sick. Right now we have eight hundred and eight drivers. So we're about a hundred short of our drivers and you can see what we've done there to mitigate that with new hires, subs. And those that are on leave. So we know that that's, that we have had this issue for many years. But obviously in COVID, it's even more important. So we wanted to give you some solutions that we are working with right now to mitigate this. We believe we'll be successful either way. And really there are three areas that, that we are looking at. First of all, we are working with contractors. As you will see, as just as we are doing with custodials to get some outside drivers into that, those a hundred drivers that we need. We're recruiting retired drivers and we could be bringing to you some additional opportunities for subpay. Additional subpay for drivers when it comes to transportation and to custodials to ensure that we have enough with CDL. And finally, one that would, we've talked about for a long time, we can stagger start times and finish times of our schools. Without much difficulty at all, it would require great communication, but we can actually reduce our routes by at least a hundred and fifty routes. By staggering some start times. And so we will bring you some of those options as we continue to clarify those. But we're confident we can meet what the, what we need to do to, to meet all of our routes as we move forward. Options as we continue to clarify those, but we're confident we can meet what the what we need to do to to meet all of our routes as we move forward. With custodial staff, we've made some positive momentum here, so first of all, we want to talk, we heard from our elementary school principals. They really wanted to move that second shift in elementary to be there when students are there. So that they can support cleaning the schools when needed, the bathrooms when needed, obviously between classes, cafeterias, all of those things, so we. Responded to our principals by doing that. We also have this centralized night crew. That really is, is, you know, a team of custodians that if we are short at schools in the nighttime, we can. Make sure we issue them and they can get out there and clean an entire school within a couple of hours and so we did that about two years ago and that's been really effective. In mitigating those areas where we might have some absences. But you will see as of February eleventh, we had a hundred and twelve custodial vacancies. And so here is our current plan to supplement those custodians. Right now, as you can see, between HR and other contractors. And retired plan operators, we're looking at bringing in about seventy one. Additional custodial staff and making sure that first. We hire those and put those in positions. So that all of our day crew has are completely filled, so when students are in the building, we have them completely filled, we're also looking for opportunities for bus drivers to sub. And we're reaching out to contractors, we feel that we will be able to to meet all a hundred and twelve custodial vacancies. Before we open up school. Did want to highlight again, the memorandum of understanding with JCTA. So as you know, survey was released last week and a lot of staff had concerns and really what we found, we think was a lot of communication issues. And making sure that we communicate at every single school our plan. And ensure that everyone sees all the supplies that we have, all the plans that schools are doing, that our principals communicate those plans. And really that they they get some input from JCTA. So over the weekend, our team worked around the clock. With Brent McKim and his team to come up with an MOU. Of moving forward so that we can work together on this prior to opening up school. And it was really around several areas, first of all, COVID related supplies and services in this MOU, it clearly says. Out of cares to funding, we will provide everything that a school needs and no schools. Individual school budget will be impacted. In order to open schools, that will all come from the district level, that we will have assurance of compliance. That if teachers or faculty members have issues of noncompliance, whether that's mask wearing or other issues. They go immediately to the principal, the principal's works to resolve that. If it continues on, then that would come to the district collaborative reopening committee. And we would then possibly do a walkthrough of the school collaboratively do that and find ways that we could make sure that that building obviously becomes in. Compliance as quickly as possible. Every single school has a collaborative reopening committee, it's a fifty fifty committee between school and district personnel. And those employees that of JCTA and we are going to add an additional staff member. A classified staff member within the school. They will be meeting on a regular basis to work through the plan. Communicate that plan to faculty and then if faculty and staff want to give feedback, they give it to this committee and the principals adjust. Also on non ADA determinations for employees, we're working to best serve our employees to provide them. That safe learning environment, if obviously they have an ADA determination or they live with someone who has that same determination. Then we can work to make sure that we we meet their needs. And then obviously employees on the COVID vaccine waitlist, which we do have a number of those on the waitlist, which they are serving those now. We can address that need immediately. And make sure that they're not in a school before having that second booster shot of that vaccine, so. Great collaborative work this weekend, we appreciate our work with JCTA to do everything possible at each of our one hundred and fifty five schools. And all of our work locations to make sure that we can safely open up and be supportive. And so I'm going to turn this over to Jimmy, I know a big part of HR has been employee requests for accommodations. So Jimmy Adams, I'd like you to address that challenge, please.
Thank you, Dr. Polio. And board, as you're aware, when we originally asked employees concerning accommodations, it was prior to the vaccination being available. Once we learned that employees would have the option to be vaccinated, we reached out to see who wanted to continue their requested accommodation. One thousand six hundred and fifty three employees requested accommodations. One thousand four hundred and four have confirmed they want to continue their request. And we have not heard back from two hundred and forty nine of that original group. These numbers break down into a thousand teachers right now, three hundred and seventy six school support staff, seventy four school based administrators. And two hundred and three other staff members such as central office custodians, plan operators and other operations personnel. Within these totals of those requests and telecommunities, their accommodation. Five hundred and ninety two have been sent the form to complete the Americans with a Disability Act or the Kentucky Pregnant Workers Act. But only two hundred and thirteen so far have actually completed that form and submitted the necessary documentation that we need. Four hundred and thirty employees who do not qualify for either the Americans with Disability Act or the Kentucky Pregnant Workers Act. Have been given the special consideration request form and yet only two hundred and eighty nine employees have completed that form so far. We have an additional three hundred and eighty five employees who have yet to respond to our email concerning the Americans with Disability Act. Or the Kentucky Pregnant Workers Act. Sixty six employees have actually withdrawn their request at this point. And outside of telecommunion, we have approved another one hundred and seventy eight onsite accommodations. Again, those are not for telecommunion, but just accommodations that request at the work location. Want the board to put this into perspective, actually. In a normal pre-COVID year, we would approve approximately forty Americans with Disability Act requests. I am giving, so you can see the number quite a bit more than what they have been in the past. It actually has created a full time job for our manager employee services right now, we've actually brought in additional help during this time to assist her also. And this is all in addition to conducting the normal leaves that we have this time of year, the normal benefits. Plus the COVID leaves that are on top of that as well. At this time, I'll hand it back over to Dr. Polio.
Thank you, Jimmy, and so we wanted to encourage our families and community, once again, to go on to our website. You can see the district plan based on state guidance and all of this information. That we have provided today and then every single school, so you can see Atherton, the example there, they have their return to school portal. For Atherton High School is the example there, but all of our schools are available. And you can find the individual components of the back to school plan because obviously many of the things that Atherton does. May be very different than those that Eastern High School does based upon their school building, they will all follow. The state guidelines, but how students walk into school, where the temperature checks are. The lunches and all of those things may be very different, so we'd encourage. All of our community members and stakeholders to check out both our district plan. And our school plans as our teams have worked extensively on those. And so in summary, we wanted to remind you once again. At this point, this is our proposal. That we have been working on to bring to you, first of all, is a hybrid proposal for middle and high school. We would have an A and a B group. A group being last names A through K, B groups being last names L through Z. And you can see on Monday and Tuesday, a person, the A group, once again, A through K would be in person. The B group would be remote. Wednesday would be synchronous learning for all students. Excuse me, asynchronous learning for all students where we could deep clean the building and then it would flip for Thursday and Friday, B would be in person. A would be in remote, we have shared with you those numbers. Of, excuse me, of parents who have chosen in person or remote. It remains about sixty forty, sixty percent in person, forty percent remote, we would encourage, once again, our families, if they would like to change that. They can do that at any time at our website. You know, our proposal is that we would be five days a week with elementary school. And with smaller schools and the in person versus remote, we believe that we would have the ability. To socially distance as well with that, and so finally, the dates based again. And this will be for your approval, but the dates based again, based upon the vaccine. Distribution schedule. By the end of the first week in March, our staff should be done with the second dose of the vaccine. Our school staff should really, unless we have more delays, should be done by the first of March. And so with that fourteen day window, we and our, as you know, our elementary school staff has gone first. They would have full vaccination by the third week in March. And so we can start and predict what that start date will be that we'll give to you at another date. But that third week of March, they would be fully vaccinated and two weeks past that. Middle and high school, we would be looking at the first week after spring break in April. Would be the full vaccination and return to school for our middle and high school staff. So that gives you a summary of the proposal. And, you know, we will continue to work on this, obviously have our town hall meeting on Thursday. And then, as you know, Chair Porter and board, we will have additional meetings to discuss this and have further discussion prior to any official. Recommendation being brought to you. We thank you, we know this was a little lengthier than the usual presentation, but we wanted to give you the entire picture of the work that we've done. And at this time, we're happy to take feedback and questions that you have.
Thank you, Dr. Polio and everyone that has contributed today, we're going to use the same process. That we did at our last board meeting, each board member will be given the same amount of time to ask questions or make comments. You will have instead of fifteen minutes tonight, you will have eighteen minutes tonight. And with the understanding that you may not get through all of your questions, so you will be asked at the end of the meeting. To submit your questions to Dr. Polio for answers. In an effort to get everything answered. We all have received hundreds of emails, so it's. Impossible to have everything answered tonight, but we will do the best that we can with some of the questions we have and the emails that we have received. So.
I apologize for interrupting, we brought Dr. Moyer just to do a short update on the CDC, the new CDC. Release from Friday, just so you have that, I'm sorry, could I give her about five minutes, please?
Absolutely.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Moyer.
Thanks, Dr. Polio, and I don't need to take five minutes, I'm just here to help answer any questions more from the medical side, I can be here for about thirty minutes. And so just want to, just want to say, I know the CDC released new guidelines on Friday. They may look different at first, but when you come through them, they are very similar to the state. Healthy at school guidelines and so fit in with what everything that JCPS has been planning for the last year. And all the mitigation strategies that they have in place. And so just as your health director feel comfortable with the the plan that is there and how it. Adheres to the new guidelines as well as the state guidelines and so happy to answer any questions. I think the only piece that was probably missing from the presentation because it's not in the state guidelines. Is the testing strategy and my team is working really closely with JCPS, we are doing a pilot now with the NTI hubs. And I'm hoping that that will be successful and have in place for when school opens.
Thank you, Dr. Moyer.
Chair Porter, may I ask a question about process?
I'll let you ask, ask your question because you're not at the top to ask questions tonight, so you may ask one question and then the next person to speak will be Dr. Schul. After Dr. Schul, it will be Sarah McIntosh.
Thank you, Chair Porter, it's just a process question, I'm wondering. I don't know if you guys did, I didn't know Dr. Moyer was going to be here and probably would have prepared some different questions had I known. I'm wondering if we can. Whatever the table, I guess, this discussion. Until we've had time to dig into the CDC. Guidelines more since they just came out on Friday and have some more discussion about that.
I am available by phone and happy to participate in whatever would help.
Does that take care of your question, Dr. Chris?
Well, I mean, the question I'm asking is for us as a board, if if we want to not do this with Dr. Moyer at the moment, since we weren't aware that she was coming on and. Perhaps schedule a later date to do it.
I think you sent an email earlier asking something like that and I responded to your email. And copied all board members that I would like to speak with you, Dr. Polio. And Kevin Brown tomorrow or the next day to determine what that meeting would look like. As we talk about the new guidelines from the CDC, so. When you respond to the email about your availability, we will set up a meeting either tomorrow or Thursday. And I purposely copied every board member so that they were aware of your request. Trying to be in alignment with the JCPS policy. So for tonight, we're going to follow the agenda based on the information that we have received and those have have contributed this evening. There is a potential that there will be another conversation, but I can't. Speak to the to that family tonight until we have a conversation with you, I appreciate that Dr. Moyer is here. But I also. Want to make sure that if we have any more medical conversations that we have a good representation. Because there are some concerns that some of us live differently than others, so we want to make sure that we have people at the table for those conversations. So having said that, I would like to turn it over to Dr. Schul, please.
Thank you, Chair Porter, and thank you, Dr. Polio and to all of the team for your presentation tonight. I'll get into my questions. You have proposed a hybrid schedule for middle school and high school students. Is Infinite Campus. Able to facilitate the scheduling demands that a virtual versus in person. Instruction scheduling pattern would demand. Over and against, and I guess on top of the hybrid schedule.
Yes, that's a great question, I'm going to have Dr. Coleman answer that, please.
Good evening, yes, it is, we are. We are working with Infinite Campus on several different scenarios now and have been. Just in in preparation and so, yes.
The take for us to have a hard yes on that and to be conclusive with that work?
I can give, I can say a hard yes right now with details. To come, once a decision is made or even before, if if needed.
So am I hearing you say that developing Infinite Campus in order to facilitate both hy- the hybrid. Learning with middle and high school students. With the in person and the virtual option. That you'll need the board to approve it before Infinite Campus can be developed to actually handle that approach?
No, I'm sorry, I don't think so, I mean, unless that, no, I don't. No, no, we've been working with them for some time and. They know the different scenarios that we are considering and and already other districts are. Implementing those kinds of scenarios, so.
They're still under consideration and under development, under under construction, we don't have any hard. And fast methods for doing Infinite Campus and I'm asking this question because of course the district sort of runs by Infinite Campus. My parents depend on it, teachers, principals, and so if that platform is not prepared to accommodate. This new approach, how long will that take?
Yes, I'm sorry, it is prepared and when, you know, it is prepared. It is able to do that and they are already doing that now with other districts, I misunderstood, I'm sorry.
And if I can add, if I can add, Dr. Schul, they meet, that Infinity Campus team meets every Monday to. To strategize for for all grade levels and they are creating cheat sheets for the. Because there's the Infinity Campus person at every single building, so they're creating sheets to assist them with this process, so they are prepared. For the the in person versus the the virtual learning plan, so.
Okay, thank you. Is it true that families will be able to decide almost daily whether or not they will attend virtually or in person? And how is that dependent upon the students? COVID exposure and so forth?
Are you, are you asking like after in person starts or are you talking about before we go?
After in person starts.
Yeah, we we have to accommodate for when when situations changes with with families during during a COVID pandemic.
So if, so since that's the case, how will that fluctuation in number be handled in individual school buildings?
It will be handled in individual school buildings by individual. It will be handled in individual school buildings by individual case. I mean, there will be some cases will in some classroom maybe more than others, but it will be handled by individual buildings and principals and teachers will lead that work.
Okay, who will be responsible for re-rostering students in the system?
It would be the counselors, just like, you know, you would see anytime on a regular day when a we have the mobility that we have in JCPS. So there is no doubt that's a challenge when it comes to that, but we we would want to meet the needs of our kids.
And we're confident that every school is prepared to meet that unique challenge of the fluctuations of the number of students in person versus the number of students virtually learning daily?
Yes, I mean, I think the biggest challenge, Dr. Schul, will be at the beginning, obviously the planning at the very beginning. But I know schools can meet that once we, once, you know, they plan that and then they will be able to to meet the mobility of regular day-to-day instruction, but we are definitely provide the support that they'll need to make sure that if one school has more than others, we're going to be there to assist them in that in that process.
Dr. Polio, might I make one comment?
Please.
I work with our records and Infinite Campus attendance folks. I think where Dr. Coleman was going is Jenny Westerfield and and her team are ready to give very clear directives to schools on how to build the schedule structures they need. But it is not a good use of their time to do that until they are sure that we're going to be doing the rotating schedule, that they know that that's going to be by alphabet. That requires a ridiculous amount of data entry for them that they're obviously not going to give directives on until we are aware that that's the decision that's made. If if we have to pivot and go another direction, there's guidance on how to help schools do that as well. So know that there are systems to do what we need to do. We just need to know what it is we need to do before we can kind of dispense that out to schools.
How will shifts due to COVID affect ECE supports and the ARC meetings that are required with every change with students' IEPs and so forth?
Let me repeat that. So how are ARC meetings are going to be affected with students shifting from in-person to virtual? Was that the question?
So with ECE supports, as it relates to students who may be have been exposed to COVID, maybe quarantining and so forth, how will that impact the ECE supports and the ARC meetings that are required for every change with those ECE students?
So as our ECE students are coming in, obviously the teachers are going to know who's already going to be virtual and who's going to be in-person. And teachers need to communicate with these parents. They need to know their kids. They need to know the the students' needs. And if a student has to quarantine, they will go back to the NTI. We are not going to require an ARC if they just have to quarantine. However, if it's longer than the typical quarantine time, they do need to have an ARC meeting. Or if students students are going virtual for, you know, that's what they determined that they are going to do, they also have to have an ARC meeting because ultimately their IEP will change. But because quarantining is temporary, then, you know, we're not requiring an ARC for every single student that goes into quarantine.
Okay. Do we? How I'm just curious about this as a parent. How are we expecting parents to attest that their student doesn't have a fever of one hundred point four daily?
Kevin, can you answer that?
Yes, we are not requiring that the parents sign. We're actually giving a notice to the to the parent. And the notice is saying that when you're when you present your student to the bus, you are basically committing to Jefferson County Public Schools that you have taken that the child is showing no symptoms and is not have a temperature above one hundred point four.
So basically, we're on the honor system.
That's correct. And that's consistent with state guidance on that. All districts are doing that that are back in person. The only difference is I think some districts may are having parents sign that document. We elected to have the same guidance information from the state about that, but not requiring parents to sign it just just because of logistics.
Okay, thank you. How will the district accommodate social distancing in the way that it was demonstrated on the video? I think on the video, there were like four or six kids and they looked really socially distanced and successfully so. But we know that our schools are much more crowded than that. And we know that in some some schools, they have a high, a higher percentage of students coming back into the buildings than others. So so, I mean, give me a realistic understanding of how we're going to accommodate social distance.
So I think that's a great question. And, you know, I think it's important to note. You know, and we're open about this. There is no way to ensure that six feet distance at all times when you have kids in a building. You can mitigate that based on state guidance by students wearing masks and ensuring you are following all the other mitigation strategies that are in the back-to-school plan. And so, yes, we will have much smaller amounts of kids in schools. So when we're looking at our high schools and our middle schools, we're looking at most about a third of the kids in a school based on the hybrid. Now, we do understand the challenge with elementary school in five days a week, that we will have some schools where we have a variety of how many are choosing the in-person and how many are choosing the virtual. And so we're working with schools to ensure they use all of their staff and every spot in the school building to spread out. But there is no doubt, Dr. Schul, that at times, kids are going to be within six feet of each other. We have to ensure that there are the mitigation strategies being in place.
Okay, great. How are we ensuring that every parent has a thermometer?
I don't think we can ensure that.
So should we be including in our materials that every parent needs to buy a thermometer so that they can honestly attest that their student is has does not have a fever of one hundred point four? When they get on the bus, because if you don't have a thermometer, how can you do that?
Yeah, that's that's a good question. I guess that's something we'll need to address.
All right, thank you. USDA requires that students who are participating in virtual learning also be provided meals. How will we accommodate that?
The meals will be available, I believe, in the same way that they are now. Is that correct, Mr. Perkins?
That's correct. What we'll probably do is use our middle school and high schools as distribution sites because they're more regionally located. And they have a larger staff in the in the kitchen cafeteria. And so, yes, we will still be providing meals like curbside service for those students in virtual school.
Okay, so there will be a curbside service for students in virtual school to pick up their meals on a daily basis in the same way that it is now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, wonderful. When will we have definite numbers of bus drivers presented to the boards? And when will we know whether or not they'll be hired by a contractor? Or whether or not they'll be given incentives paid by the district? When can we expect that report?
Definitely before you vote, sir. So, you know, that's still to be determined when that date would be. But you would definitely have that information prior to that.
How many substitutes have been vaccinated?
Substitute teachers?
Yes.
Jimmy, do you have that answer?
We've had well over five hundred substitutes that have been vaccinated at this point. I can go in and a few minutes here and try to nail down how many have actually requested vaccination.
And those substitutes who have been vaccinated, they have stated that they intend on returning to JCPS to teach? Okay, do we have enough substitutes to facilitate our daily needs?
Yes, we do. We've got different substitutes that are for different areas, but we have we have enough that have said that, yes, they come back that we should be able to do.
Okay, I keep hearing that there will be certified teachers who will be assigned to different tasks in 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 our schools. How will we ensure that we have enough certified teachers in order to accommodate those tasks?
When you talk about tasks, which tasks are you talking about?
So in these meetings and in the literature that has been sent to the board, we keep being told that certified teachers will be used for additional tasks for the separating of students who might have COVID symptoms and so forth. I'm just curious as to where these additional certified teachers are coming from and how are we ensuring that every school has the number of sort of additional certified teachers that they need?
We're working with all the schools. Right now, they're trying to make sure of the numbers they have that will need the accommodation of telecommuting. What we've been looking at is how many additional staff will they need in place such as substitute teachers and others who have certification in order to cover requirements where substitutes or certification is required. Once we have those numbers and we have confirmed all our different accommodation requests that we have. And as I said earlier, there are a lot of those who have yet to respond to us. Once we have that, we'll be able to ensure that we have enough people at all the different locations.
I could add to that. I think what you're referring to are the amount of resource teachers that we have that may be centrally office located, and those are all certified teachers, whether that be MTSS, deeper learning, reading specialists, math specialists, those are the ones that we would at least initially to ensure. And and we do that every single year at the start of the year. We would put those folks at bus depots to help and assist. We would do the same thing with schools at the start of the year.
Okay. Mr. Adams, you said that one thousand four hundred and four teachers have requested continued accommodations. I know that some individuals have been denied their accommodations. They had previously been approved. And now they've been denied. Can you explain how that's being handled and why those individuals have been denied their accommodations?
Understand that prior to this, no one had been approved. We had everyone that could tell.
Some of those individuals have approval letters.
I'm not familiar with any approval letter. We may have told them they could tell at this particular time because everyone was telling at this particular time. What we are doing is going through in light of the vaccination and we are seeing whether or not they qualify for the Americans Disability Act or the Kentucky Pregnant Workers Act. If they qualify for that, then we're going through the process to collect the necessary paperwork so that we can do those approvals. For those who do not qualify for that, those are the ones who we are asking to complete the special request form for consideration of permissions to telecommute. And we'll be reviewing that once we finish with all the ADA and Kentucky Pregnant Workers Act. Because we need to figure out who will be doing those, who will be granted telecommute accommodations prior to the others so that we then know how many more we can approve in order for schools to be able to safely open.
Okay, thank you. Finally, I mean, it seems to be a really interesting time to be trying to open schools mid to late March, you know, right as spring break headed into the end of the year. Are we pushing to reopen schools in order to to be for the kids to be in place for standardized testing? Is that what the big push is about instead of allowing ourselves more time for a comprehensive plan for building upgrades, for staffing developments? Is is standardized testing one of the big issues that we're that we're pushing toward and the reason why we're so adamant about opening schools at this point?
That would be for me. No, sir, I don't believe that's the case. As a matter of fact, in our legislative priorities that the the list we are pushing for the waiver where there is no standardized testing this year. Because we will have so many people virtual, so many people that will be on hybrid. It would be difficult. So we know the former Secretary of Education did not grant the waiver. And we are waiting for the current Secretary of Education, who I still believe is not yet in fully in office, has to go through Congress, the Senate. And so once that happens, I know the vast majority of states will be requesting that waiver so that we do not. The only testing that we will approve of between now and the end of the school year would be map testing, which is just math and reading so that we can get a picture of where our students are. There will not be accountability with that, but then we can make adjustments based on that to provide them summer learning, get them into our summer programs, and really no, begin to build a plan. So there really is no intention for us, at least unless it's mandated on the standardized testing front.
Thank you.
Board Member McIntosh?
I apologize. My questions do not have a theme, so I'm gonna jump around just a little bit. I'll start with maybe some of the more simple things first. This may be for Dr. Polio, I'm not sure. You mentioned that if we're short with bus drivers, the potential of being able to stagger some of our start times and things like that. Would we have, would we run into any obstacles regarding providing the state mandated instructional minutes or, you know, with the start time and making sure they get all their time in? Would we have any problem with that?
No, we would not. And it's actually, I think, the way the board prior to COVID wanted to go, which was to to prepare an additional start time that would have some of our students starting later than seven forty. So I think it's a good opportunity to explore that that option for for permanency.
Perfect, thank you. With regard to a lot of our A-FAB, our alternative programs where students are placed in those programs for a temporary amount of time, sometimes weeks, sometimes months. But some do, of course, go on to graduate from those programs. But how has NTI impacted their enrollment? And do we expect their enrollment and programming to change very much as a result of returning to an in-person environment?
Yeah, great question. Dr. D. Ferrari, can you take a shot at that, please?
Sure. So, I mean, in the current state, those schools are operating just like any other school would be. They're operating off of NTI. I think that there is no question moving forward. We see lots of different and expanded opportunities for students that are struggling with the regular comprehensive high school setting. So honestly, we see kind of the post-COVID nineteen return, whether it's virtual or in-person, by that family selection to be a broader opportunity for students that are struggling to maybe meet behavioral expectations in a regular school. Obviously, virtual contexts are very different. But we've also realized that there's lots of ways for students to get things accomplished with more choice and different kinds of supports. And so I am not worried that we'll be able to support the students that need that face-to-face connection in the brick-and-mortar setting. Those students can continue to have the virtual option as any other student can. And then, as we talk about referrals, we spent a lot of time pursuing a very restorative approach to referrals to alternative school or partnering with Volunteers of America and local consultants on that. And we feel like we're just going to be able to do a better job working with students and families who just need different options. And I think this really different place that COVID's put us has expanded our ability to think differently about choices.
Okay, thank you. I know in the questions that I submitted to Dr. Polio and his staff, this was answered, but I think some of the faculty and staff of some of the high schools maybe need to hear the same response, just so that everyone's on the same page. There was some concern about our students that are in various CTE programs, not being able to get access to either certification exams or those. You have to forgive me that I don't know the proper terminology, but you have to physically demonstrate a skill in order to move on to the next level of that training. So I know that this was answered for the board members, but can we just make sure that everyone in the community and the families and students know what the plan can be for them with regard to being able to access those industry certifications and demonstrations of of ability?
Sure, great question. Dr. Dossett, could you take that, please?
Absolutely. Yes, we've worked closely with our transition readiness department as well as our high school office to come up with a healthy-at-school guidelines for administering the CTE assessments. We piloted this with our PSAT and our ACT assessments on a voluntary basis with our students, and it's worked well. And so each school that is interested in doing CTE with our students and it's worked well. And so each school that is interested in doing CTE testing, they would need to submit a plan that's then reviewed by the testing office, the high school office, as well as our health services office to make sure that all of the guidelines are being followed. But we have had success, um, with that, with PSAT and ACT, so that will be an opportunity moving forward with our certifi- certi- um, industry certification assessment.
Thank you very much for that. Um, when we, again, I'm just kind of jumping around here, but when we talk about the summer services that we want to provide for students, we've talked about, um, credit recoveries and interventions and things like that, have we, has there ha- been any specific conversation about providing especially, um, high school graduating seniors with, um, counseling services? I know that nationwide data is showing us that FAFSA applications are way down. Um, a lot of our community and even university appli- or applications for next fall, the numbers seem to be down, um, in a lot of those institutions. So are we gonna be able to use some of like our CARES funding gears? You know, all those different, um, revenue sources? Can we provide some counseling services over the summer to make sure that students are able to access their transcripts and get those letters of recommendation and things like that? Um, if they've not been able to do that successfully through this, um, NTI virtual platform?
Yeah, great question. So we have a team working, uh, pretty intensively right now on, um, you know, what we call the additional learning opportunities. And so we have a short-term plan and a long-term plan that they're developing. The short-term being this summer. The long-term plan being the next three to five years, providing additional learning opportunities that we really wanted to do prior to COVID. That was a part of Future State prior to COVID, um, in order to catch to, but it even becomes more important now that we do this over the next five years. So I think each of the next several summers, but definitely this summer, Ms. McIntosh, we're gonna have to provide the most robust opportunities for kids that we've ever provided. Um, and open up many of our schools. You know, we had success with, um, the Backpack League two summers ago, but that was a thousand students. And so, you know, we will need, uh, opportunities for twenty to thirty thousand students this summer and the services that schools provide. Um, so, you know, I've told our principals, our, our funding for that will not be an issue because of CARES II funding, where we can provide additional resources, uh, to our teachers to be there, to our administrators to be there, to ensure our mental health professionals, that we provide all the supports that our kids need. Um, and I think that's an excellent point, that counselors are there to support kids finishing up those last preparations, uh, before college as well. So, uh, yes, to that question.
Thank you. Um, I know that we have a lot of students in our community that are very transient and they do transfer schools, um, sometimes more than even once a school year. So, we're being very intentional, our schools are being very intentional about balancing, you know, their virtual numbers and their in-person numbers and getting all of that aligned. So will we, I know we're only talking about a short amount of time, but I, um, I have a little concern about students, um, maybe transferring into a school that they haven't pre- previously been enrolled in and um, maybe seeing large numbers because of, you know, we, we know our community, we know there's word of mouth, this is going great here, I'm not happy there. Um, and so how would that impact our ability to be able to, um, make sure that the VLA students and the in-person students are still balanced with that staff if we see a, a shift in our student population um, from school to school, once we see, um, students come back in person? And I didn't word that very well, so I hope you understood.
I'd be happy for Dana, uh, Dr. Dossett to weigh in on, on the student assignment front of this, but, but I'll say this. It's important to note that student mobility, um, is a major challenge in our district. Um, on any given day, that's not a pandemic. Um, I believe in, in Dr. Dossett could probably, we have several hundred kids that change schools every day, um, in a regular school setting, not during a pandemic. Um, and then, you know, the higher the poverty, the more likely there is for student mobility. So we know that students that are homeless many times could face multiple schools, even though we do everything we can out of our, out of DEP and our, and our homeless, uh, support to make sure that, that they don't have to move and go to different schools. But we know that's an issue more than any other district in this state. Um, so during COVID, it, we know that that could, that could potentially be an issue. And so that's one of the reasons that, that we're gonna have to mobilize, you know, our certified teachers at central office and all of our supports to be at schools. Um, you know, and, and for the remainder of this year, that we're really intentional on supporting schools and maybe making adjustments to those budgets or staffing if we need to. Dr. Dossett, would you like to comment?
Uh, no, I think you said it well. Um, on an average year, we have about a hundred and twenty-five moves in and a hundred and twenty-five moves out a day, just with mobility of, of students, um, changing their residency and that puts them in a different school. And so we try as much as possible, um, when we can to keep students at their school if, if, um, they choose that through a number of different ways. So we want to try to promote stability, um, when we can. And we know that's important for our students.
I appreciate that. Um, looking at some of our vulnerable community members, um, whether they are non-English speaking parents or they have inconsistent access to technology, what are, what steps are we taking that don't involve digital platforms and tweets and emails? Um, so, you know, eliminate technology for those folks that, um, have difficulty accessing it. What are we doing to communicate our back-to-school plans, um, to those communities that don't have consistent access and reliable technology?
Renee's the best. She turns on her camera when she knows it's her. It's all you, Renee.
Hi there. Good evening, everyone. Sorry, I'm sitting i- in the dark here at Van Hoos. Um, so we have been working really closely with our community partners and just recently we were talking with um, some team members from the mayor's office about outreach and what that's going to look like and having that face-to-face communication, um, with whatever the next phase of learning looks like. And so we've been working closely, uh, with the city, with other agencies and partnering to make sure that that information is there. We have information that's translated that can be handed to individuals as well as information, um, that can be shared digitally too. Um, I do want to say we have had some success with our School Connect app. And so that app provides an opportunities for families to have that two-way dialogue in their preferred language. The teacher can message in English, but that's just one tool. We know we have to do extensive outreach with what comes next.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then, um, honestly, my final question is just, um, what can I or what can we as board members do to so, to better support or, um, work with the district to help make sure that the needs of our community and our students that need to get back into the building? What can we do to help support that work? Either community advocacy, communication? Um, just how can we better support the district in this endeavor?
Um, that's a great question. I think you're asking the right questions and ensuring that we are ready to go. And so we appreciate that. We'll continue to provide that. I know, um, you know, Ms. McIntosh, things change on a weekly basis. So, I mean, it's hard to know what next week will be, wh- whether it comes to the data, um, at the state level, whether it's gonna go up or down. Um, you know, the, the vaccine, all other information like that. So, you know, th- these obviously presentations ensure that we are prepared and ready to go. Um, but then obviously we're gonna bring you to, um, some, some budget priorities about how we need to spend money going forward, specifically with summer learning, um, and continuing that for the next several years based on our CARES II funding. Um, so obviously we would a- ask for our board to have a laser-like focus on ensuring that, that we get direct student supports to the kids who need it the most and we fund that. And we'll bring you that plan, but continue to push us on that and make sure we do that.
Okay, thank you. And Chair Porter, I'm gonna yield back my, what, three and a half minutes or so? I don't think I need it this evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Our next speakers will be Board Member Joe Marshall and then Board Member Linda Duncan. Uh, Mr. Marshall.
Thank you, Chair Porter, and thank you, everyone, uh, for this enlightening conversation. Um, I'm not gonna wait too much time with the pleasantries. Let's jump right into it. Uh, Dr. Polio, can you give me the potential return dates again? What dates are we looking at?
Well, once again, that will be your, um, decision, um, as we move forward. If you approve to go back, I'm saying based upon the vaccine, the second round of vaccine, when our elementary students are through, excuse me, not our elementary students, our elementary faculty and staff are through and all of those that are needed to open, uh, elementary, which is what we started first. That would be the third week in March. Um, that fifteenth to nineteenth of March. And then middle and high school would actually be done right the week before spring break, but we would not, uh, bring them back two or three days before spring break. It would be the week immediately following spring break. That's when the vaccinations, um, would be, um, completely, we've g- gone through the both doses and the staff, um, is fully vaccinated with fourteen days after that. Now, obviously, we watch the data. We're seeing it go down right now. We went into the orange today. Um, and decision could be different based upon that data, as we said from the very beginning. So we continue to watch that, but the dates I provided were based on the vaccination schedule.
Okay, so we're looking at about six to eight weeks, uh, maybe nine for elementary, once everybody, i- if those were the approved dates, correct?
It's one, exactly one month for elementary, if that was the approved date. And then it's like seven weeks, I believe, seven or eight weeks for middle and high.
Okay. Um, next question is more about, uh, so if we make this switch to go back in person, those who choose virtual, obviously, we've had many conversations about how their teachers may change. Uh, how were, how are we expecting their schedules online to change? Cause I think some students are thinking that if they remain virtual, that they'll keep the same schedule that they have now versus having a full day virtual schedule like those will be in person.
So the Virtual Academy, those that stay in the Virtual Academy can expect, um, to have a schedule just like they do now with NTI. Um, and, and so that will not change. Now, once again, we are required by law to offer all of the courses that a student would have virtually. Uh, that's an executive order from the governor that they would if they were in person. So we do have to provide, our schools have to provide all of those options for our students. We want to minimize the teacher change, um, without a doubt, but, you know, we have to al- also be very honest with you that there will be changes um, in teachers, um, for some of our students. There's just no way around that when we look at the numbers. So that's a part of this decision of yours, is there will be changes, um, in teachers, not for all students, but for some students. Um, but we do want to say that the Virtual Academy will be, um, a, a reflection of the way NTI is right now.
Okay. And then, is there anything that we're planning right now? I know that, um, we've been getting a lot of feedback from a lot of different groups. Um, I know we've had conversations before about student representation on the board. Is there anything that we're doing, particularly, you know, trying to hear from our seniors? I love Board Member McIntosh for bringing up our seniors and you, Dr. Polio, for those things they have to do. Is there anything that we're planning to get some student voices on their thoughts about this return?
Um, it's a good question. And actually, it's, it's interesting on, um, Dr. Marshall actually had us do a REAP on adding, uh, student members, non-voting members to the board, uh, a couple of cabinets ago. So, so we had a, a, a very rigorous discussion about how that could, um, and where we would do that. Obviously, that would be somewhere down the road. And once again, that would be your decision. But we did want to talk about the racial equity implications, um, in that. And I think that, that's a great question and that might be something I would say to, um, Renee, uh, to see if we could add some student voice to the town hall on Thursday.
Yeah, it would be very nice to hear, um, cause I have a niece who's a senior at Central High School and that's the first thing she texts me. She was like, uh, I don't get a say in this, so, okay. So I know she's watching. I asked your question. There you go.
gives me her opinion every night.
Right.
That's student voice.
Yeah, there you go. That's, yeah. Um, so let's get more into kind of the day-to-day. Um, I know that a lot of us have a lot of questions about breakfast and lunch. I know that some schools are using that kiosk model or the grab-and-go. Um, do we anticipate any troubles with staffing or contact tracing for those schools who are going to have to use additional, uh, spaces in the building for multiple classes to eat in?
So, um, Joe Leffert, could you jump in and kind of talk from assistance with, Joe is representing the assistant superintendents tonight? So could you jump in and give us your perspective on that?
Of course. Uh, good evening, everyone. And, uh, thanks for that question, Mr. Marshall. So each school has unique plans regarding, uh, breakfast and lunch, and in those plans, they have been supported by, uh, Ms. Boucher and all the nutrition staff. So the plans are based on the physical space of their cafeteria and then as they expand their cafeteria frequently to their gyms or other available spaces. So where appropriate, they, uh, are utilizing those spaces for breakfast and/or lunch. Where those spaces aren't feasible to meet the needs of the students coming back, then they're utilizing alternative spaces within the building as well as the classroom. Um, so the answers are different. If you would go, you could, uh, see how different for each school. Uh, some are utilizing, as the students are screened, they go to the breakfast, grab their breakfast, then to promote social distancing and, um, if the cafe is filled, there's contingency, they go straight to the classroom. Uh, same thing for lunch. There, there, the last, the cafeteria fills, then certain classes are reading in other spaces and other locations. So, so the plans are dynamic. They've been developed by those school teams and school, uh, committees to promote the five mighty mitigating factors as well as social distancing.
Yes, and I guess my, my additional question to that is, you know, so cafeteria fills up, you know, those kids, let's say it's fourth and fifth grade, are going in. They sit at their normal seats, realize that those are full, there's a contingency area. Will those schools already have assigned seats in the contingency area for the overflow? Or, you know, cause then if you have a kid who has to quarantine, we're trying to figure out who all came in contact. Oh, they sat in contingency area and we don't know who all, you know, sat in that area. So are we already planning that far out as well?
We are, and breakfast is a little more fluid because of arrival and, um, not everyone having specific schedules for breakfast, cause kids get breakfast upon arrival. Um, the vast majority of schools are, the students are screened in safely. Then there is going to be a kiosk or a station to where the breakfast is grab-and-go breakfast and then taken to the classroom. Uh, for the vast majority, not all. Some schools are still promoting breakfast within the cafeteria in those expanded areas, which most elementaries, the gym. Lunch is more static, so there is set specific plans for each day. So the assigned seats for lunch, if potentially then contact tracing comes into effect, then we're able to respond in a very set manner because of the same things that would occur each day inconsistently for lunch.
Okay, thank you for that. So, uh, another question in regards to that, kind of a follow-up to a question that Dr. Scholl had asked, uh, when it comes to staffing for these additional measures. So whether it's contingency rooms, whether it's, uh, screenings in the morning, whether it's just traffic flow, we're gonna need additional staff in buildings. So what is our process for if I'm a principal in my building, I had a great plan and come to find out, yeah, I need two more bodies? Uh, how do we go about making sure that, you know, those schools are gonna get those extra people and where are we pulling them from?
So I'll start and then I'll let Jimmy talk about that. Um, you know, and it's similar to what we do and we remember two years ago, um, when we were monitoring the amount of subs we had every day and had to cancel school on several occasions because of subs. So we know each and every day, the amount of people that will be quarantined or subs, and we can flag schools um, from the very beginning that may have issues. Um, but if it is just, uh, you know, that I need some additional support, then we would expect the principal then to reach out to the assistant superintendent, uh, or to Mr. Moore, who we would then access and, and get some additional help and support. We did that two years ago, um, during the legislative session, as everyone remembers, and really used everyone, uh, in Van Hoos um, and other central office buildings. And so we'll be prepared to do the same thing. Uh, Mr. Adams, anything you want to add to that?
Uh, you're exactly right. We would also have the availability for substitutes.
Uh, you're exactly right, we would also have the availability for substitutes, uh, during that time as well. Um, and it's really a matter of principals working with their assistant superintendents and making us aware of the situation so we can rectify.
And, and Board Member Marshall, and that, that's again, the, the purpose of those principal PLCs is they're meeting with those assistant suits. It's not only to bounce back ideas with one another, but, uh, I meet with, uh, Joe and all the assistant suits and EAs every Friday morning with all the questions that they get from the principals that are going, uh, that, that are meeting, uh, each, each week. So, and we're hammering out, the key is tell me what you need in order to open safely. And if it's, if it's staffing, and that's when I'll reach out to, to all their chiefs and all the support staff to see what we need to open safely.
Good, thank you for that. So in regards to, you know, getting staff back, um, I guess it's for Mr. Perkins. In regards to, you know, if we start to see the PPE is running low, uh, we need to reorder supply. What is going to be our process for ordering that PPE? And then what's an expected turnaround that schools can expect to receive, uh, their additional needs?
Mr. Marshall, I would say immediately, uh, we, we've got that inventory and, and house for a reason. And we, we did that anticipated on, uh, initially trying to plan out for about six months so that we could sustain for six months. Uh, and, and if there's a silver lining to reopening for potentially two and a half months is that we're going to have an opportunity kind of test run, if you will, our, um, our, our incremental, um, replenishments of that to, to have a.
Do we feel that all buildings are ready to go on that?
That's a great question, I'm glad you asked, yes. To, to, the quick answer to your question is yes, they're ready to go. Um, like, like Mr. Jones was saying earlier, we maintain and inspect those every year. They're continually monitored, when there's an issue with one, it, we're responsive. Um, you know, and, and in this type of situation, it would be considered like an emergency type response as well. Uh, tho- those buildings are inspected, um, by how much air they push through the building. And as you heard Mr. Jones explain, how many air exchanges they do per person per hour. Uh, so they're up to code, so even though they're old and, and we, we, we tend to, uh, talk about how outdated our systems are. They're still functioning at industry standard, so we're okay in that area.
Okay. Um, cause I mean, I, I think that, you know, this conversation we've had about facilities, you know, since I've been on the board, I think that, you know, COVID-19 is, uh, shown some glaring weaknesses that we have in facilities. So along that line, I guess, Dr. Polio, uh, have we thought about, uh, capping in-person numbers based on individual building capacity, uh, in order to better, uh, operate under these mitigating circumstances?
I don't think we have a hard cap on what we would expect. I mean, obviously, it, it so much depends upon the size of the building. So, you know, when you take a very large high school, um, and, and can spread out amongst a high school, it's going to be higher than what maybe one of the L-shaped elementary schools are that were built in the fifties. So it's really going to be a school to school basis where we have to, to see what that number is with the principal and support them when need be, but there's not a hard number on that, no sir.
Okay, well, and I'm glad to hear you say that, cause, uh, that, that to me, as a teacher myself, I think would also give some of our teachers, you know, more confidence in returning, knowing that, you know, we are looking at the building and those numbers and saying, you know, I know that sixty percent of this building wants to come back, but based on circumstances, we don't see how we'd be able to do that and keep everyone safe. So I'm glad to see that, you know, we are going to be looking at building to building and what we're able to do. Uh, so that kind of leads me to my last, uh, question. And I guess, uh, this will be directed, uh, more towards Kevin, Mr. Brown. So if we, so we have this MOA, uh, which is good news that we're, we're looking at our teachers and the union and getting some feedback. And so our agreement on that side is that we're going to do everything in our power to make sure that teachers are safe. So in the event, you know, that a teacher goes through the process, something, you know, their class is a little too crowded for them. They go to the process, nothing changes. Does that warrant that teacher having the ability to refuse to return to the building? And what would our response be in that situation?
Well, I, I think the, um, it's intended that the various committees that the MOU sets up with that situation described would not occur, that if the building level committee, uh, could not handle that issue, then it would rise up to the district level committee or to district leadership to, uh, make that determination. So, um, I would hope that there would be enough, uh, layers and protection in place that there, that would not be a problem. So if the teacher, um, felt that a si- a situation arose when their own personal health and they can all, the ADA doesn't just stop. Their request for accommodations doesn't just stop, or special circumstances doesn't stop the day that we start school. So those, uh, those are, those are ongoing avenues for teachers and, uh, staff members to talk to the, the person in HR to see if their accommodations available, if there was a situation that arose that they believed, uh, that they, uh, under, due to their own situation, uh, could not be in the building. And we would evaluate that, just like we're evaluating those right now.
Okay, all right, thank you so much. I'll turn it back over to Chair Porter.
Sorry, I was on mute, thank you, um, Mr. Marshall, Ms. Duncan. You're on mute, Ms. Duncan. There it is.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, we can, thank you.
The, uh, my questions are going to be all, kind of all over the place too, um, as different things occur to me. You know, I'm not a bit doubtful of the plans that people have worked so hard to put together. I, I see how that's a very thorough job on plans. And, um, that, that's not going to be an area for me to, to dwell on. Uh, I, I'm concerned about how we're watching the infection rate within the community and what impact, um, that might have on our being able to open safely. These are, these are safe guidelines in terms of doing the best we can. And I've said that before, these are not safe guidelines in terms of keeping, keeping COVID out. Cause COVID will come in, it will ride the bus into school and it will be there. And we just hope that these things right here will help us, um, uh, keep it from spreading places. But, uh, one question that I've been asked, uh, is about our bus situations. When we do have kids get on our buses and we do assign seats and we do expect them to sit where they're supposed to sit, are, are we having anyone else who is monitoring that with the bus driver? Or is the bus driver just on his own to be, make sure the kids stay in their seats where they're supposed to? And that there's not this moving around that happens on buses?
So, um, and I know we purposely put in that video where two children were sitting side by side in their seats together. So you saw that in the return to school video. Once again, as we said last week, um, we, we cannot ensure that, um, you know, they're six feet apart on a school bus. I mean, that, that is one of the things that, um, we know we can't do and other districts have said that's an impossibility for us. Um, so that is a part of this decision without a doubt. We do have monitors on many of our buses, uh, but for those that don't, obviously, then that becomes the bus driver uh, in consultation with the local school to assist and, and help, um, the administrators there when there are problems and they arrive at school.
Alrighty, I know it's hard for the bus drivers to learn the names of everybody and make sure everybody, when, as soon as they change clothes, it's, sometimes it's hard to remember where that child was, who that child was and where he was supposed to sit, uh, when they're on there the next day. But, uh, that's a, that will be a, a big challenge, I think, for our drivers. Custodians, since custodians are supervised centrally, how is it that, I mean, how is that going to happen? That custodians in the buildings will be doing the things that they all are supposed to do without the supervision of somebody in that building because the principal's not the supervisor? How is that, the mechanics of that going to work? How, how do they have supervision over making sure they do all the things that they're supposed to do, uh, during the day?
So I'll start and then I'll either let, uh, Mr. Perkins or Mr. Robinson answer that, whoever wants to. Once again, the principal is the building leader. Um, you know, they run that building and they have the, um, anyone that is in that building. You know, that, that's a part of their job to ensure that we're following guidelines and doing the things that are necessary. So those custodians would be responsible, um, for, uh, whatever the principal needs to happen, as long as it works within their contract. Um, and we're following the contract, but Chris, would you like to weigh in or Mr. Robinson?
I'll just say this, and, and Donald, you can chime in too, if you'd like. You know, uh, the custodial crew is under the supervision of the plan operator. I mean, that, that is their primary, uh, evaluator. And those plan operators are supervised by area managers, each area manager, there's eight of them in total. And, and so they have about twenty something schools that they're in charge of, and they are frequently out in the schools, uh, not just for support, but for program compliance, ensure that's going on as well. But, you know, to Dr. Polio's point, it's going to take a collaborative effort. Regardless of the centralization of custodians, they're still part of a school team. They're going to have to communicate with the principal administration to make sure that, uh, everyone's clear on, on what the plan is for that school specifically. But then also, you know, we, we keep, um, data and, and they, they keep logs of their cleaning and, um, disinfecting regimen, so we have to ensure that they're keeping up with that, uh, staying on schedule with those as well. Donald, is there anything you'd add?
You, you're right, you're right on with, with what's being said.
Okay, that was just posed to me and I was, uh, wanting to hear how you would address that. Those, there, there is a question out there. When we look at all of the, the structure of the day for students, uh, beginning with the, the mask and the seating and the assigned seating in class and not leaving in class and not being a part of group work and, and not being able to talk during lunch and not being able to talk, uh, during breakfast. And, and all of the restrictions that we are putting on our kids. And we're doing this to elementary kids five days a week. How do we anticipate that these restrictions will affect their mental health? You know, we're worried about their mental health not being at school, but do we have any idea about how this might impact them? Was their mental health at school under these kinds of restrictions?
Well, once again, I think what we've tried to do is paint the picture of what, uh, as, as close as we can to paint the picture of what school will be like for in-person for the remainder of this school year. Um, and obviously, uh, we'll adjust based over the summer of what the fall will look like. Let's hope that, you know, vaccination is widespread and we'll be able to release some of those restrictions based on the fall. You know, but what we've wanted to do with the video and what we've wanted to do in these meetings is paint a picture for families. If, if you choose to have us go and give the green light to go back to in-person, that we paint that realistic picture. Now, I don't think it will be not talking to each other, uh, not being able to speak, those type of things. But clearly, it's not going to be exactly the same as it was when they left. And so it's important for us to, to have that realistic picture of what in-person is going to be like. Like I said before, that conversation I have with my daughter when she thinks it's going to go back to exactly the way it was. And I think it's important that, that we paint that picture for families so that they can make that decision and understand there are going to be a lot of different restrictions that weren't there in early March of 2019 or 2020, excuse me.
Now, it's not going to look like school that they remember. And, uh, I just want everybody to be aware of that, the, the ones that are pushing so hard to get them back in. Do they know what they're getting them back into? Cause it's, it's going to look different entirely. I had a question about the quarantine. Uh, teachers who have been vaccinated or staff that's been vaccinated, um, now no longer has the quarantine. But what about the fact that even they can, they can take COVID in and they can spread COVID? But now we're saying they're spreading it, doesn't require quarantine? That's confusing to me.
Well, I'll, I'll say this, we're not saying it, um, you know, we're taking the interpretation from, from the CDC on that, that then went to the Kentucky Department of Education and, and came down. I guess you can interpret that, uh, however you want to interpret it, but that's the guidance we've given, been given. But, uh, Eva, would you like to, to weigh in on that?
I'll just add, you know, they, the restrictions they've placed on that. So it's, it's fourteen days after you've completed the second series, if it's a two-dose series and it has to be within ninety days of that second dose. That's based on what they've seen thus far and people who've been vaccinated in the clinical trials and the length of time that people are being immune and, and that they haven't seen people transmitting it to other people. But they're doing it within that timeframe so that they can re, i- it's going to be this, um, the continuous reevaluation of the data and what does the science tell us?
Okay, I'm sure there's a lot that has not been, that is not known, uh, at this point on the effectiveness and, and the long-lasting effect of, of these vaccines. And I'm sure that's just going to be something that we just look at over time. I had a question about, um, virtual, uh, academy and our ESL population. And I'm not sure who wants, uh, maybe Carmen can answer this, the, uh, have we seen a, um, high percent of our ESL population choose virtual? And, and I ask that because I thought virtual had some features in it that might be very helpful and supportive to our ESL population. But have they, have they shown any, any, uh, tendency to want to choose virtual?
That's a great question, we do have some who have chosen virtual, and you are exactly right, great memory that the, um, digital platform, the digital, uh, curriculum that we chose, one of the reasons that we, we recommended that is because it can be translated into so many languages. So that was a real selling point, um, for that particular product.
I hope, I hope that they have been, uh, you may, you know, they have been encouraged to, to understand that that is a plus for them, that it, it is something that will continue to support them if they do choose, um, the virtual avenue. But, um, I, I just, to me, it was a, it was a big plus and I, I don't want to lose it. I, I hope we can have lots of, uh, VSL families take advantage of that.
Me too.
One of the, well, I went off on that and forgot what the other thing I was going to ask. Oh, I know what I was going to ask, the Chromebooks, um, what are we doing? Now, this is a, a little inside, but, uh, what are we doing if kids, um, are leaving their Chromebooks at home? And then we have kids who are, um, at school, working and they have, uh, they have to be quarantined. So they go home, but they're not in NTI, they're in, in-person learning with their Chromebooks at home. Are, are there plans for how that, that quarantine group that is not NTI is using its Chromebooks at home?
Robert, you want to take a stab at that? I mean, I, I'll say this, that, I mean, you know, that obviously, we would work to pair them with a virtual academy teacher so they get some instruction, but if you're quarantined, a great deal of that instruction is going to have to be asynchronous.
Right, and, and you would think that it would be back to the Chromebook, they would be back working with the Chromebook.
They would have to have their Chrome, they would have their Chromebook, that's why we didn't want to take them from them prior to us getting to the end of the school year.
Yeah, they will still, if they have a JCPS assigned Chromebook, they will still have the ability to use that Chromebook, uh, the option of using their Chromebook at home or, uh, at school.
Okay, they can, they will be able to bring it if they, if, if they want to or their, their teachers, uh, can, uh, work with the Chromebook at school, is that right?
Very correct.
All right. Question about dual credit and, uh, if a student, a senior chooses virtual, what happens to dual credit, uh, for those courses that, that the senior's been taking all year long? And then switches to virtual at the end, what happens to dual credit in that?
Uh, Ms. Duncan, I believe that's, we, we have to offer that option to all students. So we have to ensure based on the governor's executive order that we provide that option for all students.
Okay, I had, I had heard some. Okay, I had I had heard somebody question that the other day. So I wanted to make sure that that it is the case that the virtual academy would still award or be able to earn that dual credit.
Governor's executive order and very clear marching orders on that, that if you have a virtual option, you have to offer all the same courses.
Well, I think, let me think. I think that's really the correct of my questions. So thank you very much. I appreciate it from everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Duncan. Next, we will have board member Craig and Dr. Chris. Board member Craig first, please.
Sure, I'm going to fire a quick question I got from a JCPS employee during the meeting that I thought was interesting. Will students or families be able to choose which hybrid days they utilize in order to coordinate siblings, transportation, work schedule, other family needs? Will they be able to bounce back and forth between the Monday, Tuesday or Thursday, Friday options if they're in middle or high, based on individual needs?
So we will have, based on last name, A or B, so that all family members are the same. And if there is a separate last name that resides in the household, we will give the opportunity for them to request to move into it so that we would have all family members on the same schedule, whether they have a different last name or not. But that would be A or B based on that. I think that would be the extent at which we could provide that support.
Thank you. I want to go back to Jimmy Adams and ADA accommodations. And some other board members got into this and I apologize if I'm going over the same territory, but I had my own questions. Tell me again, how many accommodations do we usually grant per year? That was a stat that you articulated that I couldn't hear.
And we approximately do 40 Americans with Disabilities Act requests a year.
And so pulling from the survey that we received from JCTA Chart P that I'm sure you've seen, Jimmy, do you expect to qualify for an accommodation? And there are about 324 in the survey who have requested and are telling us that they would expect to qualify for an accommodation. How do we bridge the gap between the 40 that we usually get per year and those who are expecting to get it now? Does that make sense, Jimmy?
Well, I if you're asking, do those 40 that we normally have, do they get the option to telecommute? Or are you just saying that we would normally, what are accommodations they normally ask?
I guess I'm asking how we bridge the gap to deal with the increased number of accommodation requests this year.
I'll I'll jump in and I don't think that's easy, Mr. Craig, without a doubt. I mean, that's the challenge that all districts are faced with. And I I want to be clear on this with with our MOU with JCTA. We've decided to go if we implement this well above what the law requires to support our our staff. And we want to do that. But remember that we have 35,000 kids at this point who are requesting virtual academy, which we never have on a regular basis. So those 35,000 kids would be served by those that most of those that are getting those accommodations.
So can we speak confidently tonight to our teachers who are asking for those accommodations that we're going to be able to help them in this new world that we're living in?
Yes, we are doing everything we can to try to fulfill the accommodations that have been requested. We are working with those who qualify for either ADA or the Kentucky Pregnant Workers Act first. And then we're going to be looking at the other ones who have requested due to special circumstances. Keep in mind that it does, where we are trying to make sure that we accommodate people, there's a balance to make sure that we have enough people to be able to open that school as well for the number of students who are showing up. So it really comes down to a case by case basis per school.
Thank you. And I appreciate that in the ADA realm and the accommodation realm. I'll turn next to the chart R on the survey about those teachers who would be considering using sick leave, FMLA leave, retire, resign, other stuff. We had 204 who said that they were considering that instead of coming back. My question is, if that number materializes, will we still be able to fill the classrooms, still be able to run the district?
I believe so, based on the number of substitutes that we have. We would hope that people would not do that. We understand some people may qualify for some of those different areas such as FMLA. But we do believe that, yes, we could fulfill the needs that we have.
Thank you. A quick racial equity concern, I'm going to ask this of Dr. DeFari and Dr. Polio. I don't want us to lose sight of our racial equity goals. Those shouldn't be set aside, even if we're back for only two months this year. And some concerns that I've heard about how we will ensure that we are enforcing the mask mandates, the social distancing mandates, et cetera, in a racially equitable way. If you could comment on that, Dr. DeFari?
Sure. So we've created and collaborated over time to prepare guidelines for schools. This is not really different than anything we do normally. Obviously, we have new things like masks and social distancing. However, that's not different than having expectations for kids around certain things. We have been very clear with schools. We will be very clear with students. We've created lots of tools to help students understand what expectations look like, even if I'm a little one, around posters that have two golden retrievers to help me understand how far away my friend is from me. And that being six feet, all the way up to racial trauma videos that help model for staff the challenges and the opportunities that we have with mask wearing and understanding how that's going to impact our students as they come back to school. What I will say with that is, we have lots of proactive strategies to support staff and ensuring that we understand the complexity of some new challenges and some new opportunities that we face when we come back from COVID. In addition to that, we have very clear guidelines on how we expect staff to document and support these types of incidences. There is no question that we first want to just redirect and correct, right? Acknowledge that we have a mask, that's not where it needs to be acknowledged. We have students that are maybe too close together. If that is corrected, then we are finished. If we have a continued issue, then we need to obviously start to figure out, why are we having a continued issue? If we continually compromise safety, we have systems in place for that not to continue. We do not want to make staff or students unsafe, meaning the student that's maybe making poor decisions about complying with those regulations and then also students that are around or staff that are around. When those things start to escalate change or become progressive discipline, then we have the same systems in place that we would in a brick and mortar setting to address behaviors that manifest out of that. And we've also created some really direct and clear guidelines to be able to track what types of behaviors are manifesting from mask and social distancing related behaviors. So we can look at, okay, if we have an issue that's a bigger behavior than that, we'll also know if it originated with a mask or social distancing related behavior. Those guidelines you've been provided show you. We just want to make sure that we're aware of how things are happening and how we're supporting students or if we're having struggles with either of those things.
I'd like to add to that, Mr. Craig, and they've done a fantastic job, Dr. DeFari and her team, putting together some guidance for schools on this that really separate out the same thing adults struggle with. Is it just not on right? Is it on their chin? I mean, you can't watch a sporting event right now in this country without seeing coaches wearing their mask the wrong way. And so there is some correction to that and some saying, let's get the mask on correctly as opposed to just the non-compliance, I'm not going to wear that. And they've done a great job documenting that. I will say this, and I believe this, it's my 24th year in JCPS. And I know we talk a lot about whether kids will follow the directives or not, whether they will do this. In my time, now, you know, if this goes on for two or three years of wearing masks or even into the fall, you know, that's when struggles could occur, but kids step up. Kids always step up and meet the expectations. And yes, you know, and I know some people are out there will say, yeah, kids aren't going to do that. But obviously, you know, when we're going to have 50,000, 60,000 kids in a building over 155 sites, there's going to be instances where direction is going to have to happen. But I believe kids step up. I believe kids step up and I believe they will meet the requirements that are needed and and are expected of them at school. And, you know, this is not coming from someone who hasn't been in a school. I was I was in a JCPS school for 20 years. So I believe kids will step up.
I think we underestimate too how badly some of our students want to be with their peers. And I think they will do what they need to do to be with their peers. And, you know, I think there are complexities, but I also think we have proactive steps in place to support those.
I appreciate that and I agree with that last statement. I'm seeing it in my own house. I just want to make sure that our push to ensure safety doesn't result in an inequitable outcome for our, you know, for our black students in a way that we were already fighting with suspensions and other things before we came back. So thank you very much for that. All right, let's talk about the committees that we're setting up, Dr. Polio and Jimmy and others under the memorandum of understanding with JCTA. Could you give us a timeline or your quick thoughts on how those committees will start to be? Well, we'll start their work. When will they be meeting? Will the board receive some feedback directly from those committees? How can we ensure that the committee buy-in that we've negotiated with JCTA over the weekend is genuine? Just some feedback along those lines, please.
Yeah, yeah, I'd be happy to. And and trust me, if it's not genuine, we'll get feedback on that and and we will address that. And that's really what the district CRC, I think those are the letters, is for, is to be a district committee, a 50-50 committee, where JCTA picks half of the committee and JCPS administration picks half of the committee from a district level. And so we can address those issues at individual places where it might not be authentic or it might not be happening. But I believe the vast, vast majority will. We have 155 sites. We might have to do some correction. But I'll tell you this, Mr. Craig, I met with every principal yesterday. So so we quickly, as we agreed to this over the weekend, we had every principal meet virtually with us yesterday. I had four different times for principals to choose. So a good part of our day yesterday was meeting with principals. Our charge to them at that point was within the next 24 to 48 hours to contact the professional rep in the school building. I know that JCTA has communicated with them to make a decision about the makeup of the committee, how many administrators and how many of the teachers, and by the end of the week, to have that committee solidified. And so we want each school to have that committee solidified by the end of the week, begin meeting as early as early next week. First task is to go through the plan with that CRC and develop a process of sharing it with the entire faculty collaboratively. And so we said we wanted that done in about the next 10 to 14 days of of that process being done. And at a minimum, at this point, we recommended meeting once a week until we get to a point where it we've established, when we come back to school, that all of the the processes are established and then they can decide collaboratively if they go to every other week. But in the interim, it would be every week they would meet.
Thank you very much. So if, at the elementary level at least, if you ultimately recommend and if the board ultimately approves a return to elementary buildings by the week of March 15th, are we confident that the work from those committees, at least at the elementary level, will be genuine such that the teachers have buy-in into each individual school's processes and confidence in our ability to run those schools safely by the week of March 15th?
Yes, without a doubt, without a doubt.
Thank you. Testing real fast, we talked about it earlier and I know I'm repeating a point, but it would be helpful for everybody to hear this clearly and definitively. The district supports a request for a waiver from the Department of Education such that we're not just returning for testing purposes only, correct?
That is correct. So we don't request anything. So just to make that clear. First off, the state request to the to the testing is really driven by the United States Department of Education. And then each state makes an assessment program, standardized assessment program, based on those federal guidelines that have to be approved by the United States Department of Education. Last year, the the Department of Education is the one who who gave the waiver. And each state then applied to the feds for that waiver, which most, if not all states did, I'm sure. Kentucky was one of those. So we are following those, you know, the the process. We believe that there will be a waiver granted at the feds. There's no assurance of that. I also believe that if that happens, Kentucky will be provide, will be applying for that waiver as well. And then we will be getting instructions from KDE about what steps we would take from that point forward. But I feel at this point fairly confident that that's going to happen where we would not be giving that standardized test. Dr. Dossett, anything you want to add?
I know the only thing that, well, just one last piece is the Kentucky Department of Education yesterday issued guidance around assessment. But in their guidance, they made sure to note that this was a fluid situation and that they are waiting for direction from the feds in terms of a waiver.
Would we find ourselves in a world where we're doing standardized test and MAP? Or would we waive MAP if we have to do standardized test? Would we consider not doing MAP if we got the waiver, Dr. Polio?
If we have a choice, if it came down to a choice, like we were offered a choice, it would be MAP. We would provide MAP to our students because it is the least disruptive. Obviously, when you only have 45 to 60 days in the classroom, we don't want to take seven of them to standardized test. So if it becomes a choice, it would be MAP. If we were forced to do something else, and I've talked to Dr. Dossett about this, I don't know how the I don't know how the balance would occur between virtual and in-person across the country. I just don't know how standardized tests could be valid and reliable data when you have 40, nearly 40,000 of your kids at home. So that's a real issue there that I don't know how any district would be able to overcome that. That's why I significantly doubt, seriously doubt, that we would be doing any standardized testing because of the amount of kids that would be at home. But if we were forced to, we would not give MAP. There isn't, we, our goal will be to minimize as much assessment as possible. Really, we just want information that can guide us into the summer and into the fall. And we will give the least amount of standardized assessment that would get us there.
I appreciate that. I think a lot of the folks who speak to me are telling me that they agree with what you just said. From my personal perspective, limiting assessments in this narrow window and ensuring that we have quality time with these kids is much more important.
Last, to Mr. Craig brief, it will be difficult for us with reliable and valid data with some kids taking MAP from home. So that's not going to be the best data either, but it it obviously has less impact and gives us individual data that we need.
The last point I wanted to hit with you, Dr. Polio, is competence building. I think that's our biggest challenge right now and I'm so thankful that your administration, I'm so thankful for JCT's board, that you reached this MOU over the weekend in order to start building confidence in our ability to do this. Anything that you can say to the board tonight about your efforts or the district's efforts in building confidence in this plan across the district and across the community to get us back into the classroom?
Yeah, well, I think that's a great question and I'll be brief. But I think a part of that was reaching out and ensuring that there is authentic collaboration at every school. I think a big part of that is, you know, we are in a pandemic. And obviously, there's lack of trust in a lot of organizations all across America right now, and so rightfully so. But I mean, just the things like taking pictures of the PPE. I think we had a lot of questions about whether we actually had the PPE or not, but ensuring that we have those. And really making sure at the at the school level, the communication is very clear about the plans, you know, as we move back into school. And based on that timeline that I laid out before, you know, obviously, schools are still, you know, communicating that to their staff. And now we're going to do it in a collaborative way. So I think that trust will build. When we've talked to other districts, though, Mr. Craig, I mean, it's it's been pretty clear, though, that this lack of trust. this lack of trust is almost in every single district prior to when they go back to school. But when they do get back in there and they get back into, into the action and see the processes that are put in place, people usually feel pretty comfortable and trust that once you get started. And that's happened. I've talked to many superintendents who have said that.
Thank you, and thank you, Chair Porter.
Thank you, Dr. Chris.
Thank you, Chair Porter. One of the things, and I apologize, I've got twenty-five pages of notes here. I'm gonna be scrolling through, so if I'm quiet for a moment, I'm just doing that. I'm not gonna go through all twenty-five pages, don't worry. But one of the things that, as we, you know, get all this feedback from people and we cope with the very understandable frustrations that people have about schools being completely virtual for now, I want to provide some context about just how poorly the United States as a whole has managed the pandemic. So the WHO, World Health Organization, provides some really handy, easy-to-download data tables with the most relevant statistics. So over the last week, as of a few days ago, over the last week, the US had twenty thousand deaths over the past seven days. There are only nineteen countries in the entire world that have had more than twenty thousand deaths total throughout the pandemic. Kentucky alone has had more deaths than one hundred and eighty-five other countries have had total. Louisville alone has had more deaths than one hundred and forty-two other countries have had total. A Lancet study recently published, found that the US could have prevented forty percent of all of the COVID deaths that we have had if we had taken measures that other countries did. So we are trying to do our best to return some children to in-person education in the midst of what is, what can only be described as a complete failure on any governmental level to manage the pandemic effectively. And we're doing our best to do it even given that, that failure. There are other countries that are having to close schools again that have managed the pandemic much better than the United States has. Specifically, getting into some specific material, I would encourage everyone to pour through the new CDC guidelines that were released this past Friday. And I would encourage you to do that for a number of reasons. One, one reason, and I'm speaking to the community more than my colleagues at this point, but one reason is that the CDC really comes out swinging at communities that have not controlled community spread. They make it very clear that they are pretty irritated, ticked off, disappointed with cities that have not gotten community spread down. In essence, and please read it for yourself, so you don't have to take my word for it, but in essence, what they say is schools, and I think they say, they do say this directly, schools should be the last things to close and the first things to open. Clearly, that has not been the way that we have prioritized things in the city, state, or country. That's unfortunate, and the CDC is asking communities to make sure going forward that that is something that we do. One of the things that excites me about the CDC guidelines is that, as Dr. Fauci put it recently, it's been a full year, and this is the first time we have had clear, detailed, and objective criteria to apply to our decision-making process. So the good news is we no longer have to rely on our personal opinion, you know, our subjective judgment. You know, we have very clear guidelines, and that's one of the reasons, as Chair Porter mentioned earlier, that I'm very interested in the possibility of devoting an entire JCPS board meeting to just discussing and getting on the same page with the CDC guidelines, because they do provide us a clear pathway to returning to some in-person instruction, but they lay out a very specific set of criteria that must be met in order for us to do that. One of the things, and this is a question upcoming now, one of the things that it says in those guidelines is that, and I'm just gonna quote directly, "At all levels of community transmission, employers should provide reassignment, remote work, or other options for staff who have documented high-risk conditions or at, or who are at an increased risk for severe illness from COVID nineteen, from COVID nineteen." It then goes on to say, "These options should likewise be extended to staff who have a household member with a high-risk condition or who are at an increased risk for severe illness from COVID nineteen." So I know one of my foremost concerns, as we've thought about returning to some in-person instruction, and I believe that it's a concern that some of my colleagues share, has been precisely this, has been, you know, how do we ensure that we are accommodating not only our employees that have high risks, but their family members as well? The CDC guidance now says that this is something that, that we should do. So, question is, how do we, you know, I don't know what the status of, you know, this is legally speaking, but how do we incorporate this CDC mandate, or whatever the appropriate word is, that's probably not it, into our staff accommodation policies?
Thank you, and I'm perfectly fine having a break from questions. So if you, you know, eighteen minutes is fine by me. It was a nice six-minute break. But I think that was a point of the MOU, is that, that, you know, our goal is to do more than any other district is doing and meet the needs of our staff members. Clearly, we have to, you know, there, there has to be a process where we review those. You know, and I think a lot of that is prior to the vaccine. You know, there aren't many districts, I think, that, that are, all the employees are receiving the vaccine. But clearly, in the MOU, we spell out that we want to meet the needs of those that have someone in their, in their household that has, that is high risk. So I think we're, you know, we're doing that, and obviously, we'll, we'll come to you with clear data about the numbers that we approve or don't approve. We won't have individual names, but we would be specific about the reasons why they weren't approved. Kevin, anything you want to weigh in on that? Or Jimmy, either one?
No, I, and Jimmy and I and team, we had our weekly accommodation meeting today, and pretty much the outcome was exactly how you described it, Dr. Polio. Obviously, the MOU memorializes that. We were moving in that direction based upon direction from Dr. Polio and the board over the, particularly the feedback we've heard over the last few weeks. So I feel comfortable that we are, I think we're all saying the same thing at this point. Jimmy?
One thing I will, I will add is that we do have that request for special consideration, but keep in mind that prior to a vaccination, we had nearly four thousand employees who were asking for accommodations. And so that number has gone down tremendously now that people are being able to get that vaccination. And I think it's commendable for the district to be thinking about that. We want employees that want to get the vaccination to have that before we return to in-person classes.
Thank you, that's great. I mean, I just want to underscore the fact that this is, you know, now something the CDC says that we, we have to do, and therefore, you know, if it, if there are employees who feel like we're not doing it, that we need to make sure that, we need to make sure that they are. And I'm glad, very glad that we got that MOU in place. You know, a lot of it's aspirational, which is understandable, given where we are with everything. But it's definitely a positive development that, that it's in place.
Real quick, just along those lines to spell, you know, something that I know you've received in emails before that we clarified in the MOU, those that receive accommodations to, to work virtually, you know, will not be required to do that from school if that is the accommodation that they receive. So I know we've, we've heard that a lot. You know, we are not forcing people to do that. We obviously want to provide them the accommodations they need to remain safe and healthy.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I mean, there's bound to be misunderstandings and miscommunications in something as complicated as, as this. You know, one of my biggest frustrations throughout this whole thing has been that, that, that there hasn't been that objective criteria for us to look towards. So i- if you pay attention to what people say, everybody that I've come across so far, everybody nationally that says, "We want kids to be back in school as soon as possible", they always say something like, "But however, this has to happen. If this happens, there's always qualifiers to it." And a, a perfect example, and I, I don't mean to pick on the governor, it's just an example that, that, from his February third statement, and I apologize, I've now lost my... Yeah, so the, the governor said, "Reopening schools is a top priority, but density control, masking, proper ventilation, and community mitigation must be in place." The problem is, none of those very admirable goals about density control mitigation are ever defined objectively. And so everybody is left to guess or wonder, or just kind of feel in the dark about if we have, if we have done that or not. Again, one of the reasons that I'm pretty keen on having that work session for the board on the CDC guidelines is precisely because we now have that. So when people say, "We want schools to open as soon as possible, however, this has to be done", we now, we now know what this is that, that must be done. And I think it would really be, I think it'd be really productive for the board to be on the same page objectively about what those criteria are. I think it would make for a much more productive conversation. On the question of equity, one of the other, I think, positive things about the CDC guidelines is that they focus on equity a lot, and they say a number of different times that school systems should prioritize. I mean, in so many words, they're, they're most vulnerable students. There's been a lot of talk in the community, you know, from people across the political spectrum and with different views on the role of schools right now, and whether we should be in person or not. There's been an almost universal feeling that schools not being in person is harming a lot of our most vulnerable students. However, we also know that our most vulnerable students are some of the families that are precisely the ones that are least likely to choose the in-person option, should we decide to return. So a few points about this. One is that I'm, I'm pretty uneasy with what I consider to be thus far, what we've discussed, being a one-size-fits-all kind of approach, where we just kind of throw the doors open wide, you know, and we don't prioritize certain groups to get them back in school. The CDC is very clear in their most latest guy, in their latest guidance that we need to prioritize, that we should not have a one-size-fits-all approach. You know, the, for instance, Washington DC, I know they're capping their number of students at fifteen thousand in-person students, this translates into about twenty-nine percent of their enrollment, or about half of what we're expecting right now. You know, I think that'd be a fantastic thing for us to, to follow Washington DC's lead there, and not only cap the number of students that we're gonna bring back in person, but prioritize, as, as Washington DC is trying to do, prioritize those that are most in need of an in-person educational environment, the, the ones that we are most worried about. That's a goal that everyone, I think, on this board has said that we have, is to make sure that our most vulnerable students are taken care of. And so I would hope that that would be something that, that we could seriously consider doing. You know, the other point about that is that in the context of, if we, if we return to in-person instruction and the families that do return to in-person instruction are disproportionately wider and wealthier as the numbers indicate that they are likely to be, we have to ask ourselves, is this an equitable decision to the way that we are returning to in-person education? And the, the answer, I think, would have to be no, that it's not an equitable decision, that we are pouring, I mean, you saw those photos, you know, in the presentation earlier, we are pouring a significant amount of resources into trying to return to in-person education, but the families that are gonna benefit from it the most are the ones that are least needy in our community. And the ones that would benefit from it the most are the ones that are not choosing to benefit from it because of many reasons, but one is, you know, I mean, there's a long history of mistrust, for good reason, between African-Americans and institutions like school systems and healthcare systems in this country. So I'm very, very uncomfortable with the way that we are approaching currently a potential return to in-person instruction because of equity. And it's something that I would really like to see us change at a fundamental level about how we're looking at going back to in-person instruction. The one, and I well, I think I'm gonna skip that. I think I'm gonna skip that one for now, because I could take up its own eighteen minutes. And I'm gonna skip ahead to another one. So one of the other big parts of the new CDC guidelines, and again, I'm just gonna read directly from them. So I don't, if I can find it, which I've got a page number here, so I don't mess it up. Here it is, okay. Regarding sports, and I'm not gonna make a motion tonight to to anything regarding sports. I don't, I don't plan to do that, but I want us to have this information. So these are direct quotes from the COVID new CDC guidance. In, in school systems that are in our category, which according to the CDC, we are still in the highest transmission category, and we're likely to be so for at least a little while longer. Sports, and this is a quote, "Sports and extracurricular activities are virtual only." For the next tier down, if, if our community transmissions comes down, it says, "Sports and extracurricular activities occur only if they can be held outdoors with physical distancing of six feet or more." "In-person instruction should be prioritized over extracurricular activities, including sports, to minimize risk of transmission." "Some close-contact sports may not be able to be implemented at any level of community transmission." So these are the strongest statements yet that we have from the CDC about COVID and sports. They cannot really be more clear that they expect us, districts that are in our category of transmission, to shut down sports. We are going against official CDC guidance at this point by continuing to have sports. In the last week alone, JCPS teams have had eight cases and one hundred and twenty-eight students having to quarantine. Eleven of our high schools have had cases. That's over half of our high schools' sports teams have. So going forward, Dr. Polio, I would like you to seriously consider bringing a recommendation to this board at the earliest possible convenient, your earliest possible convenience, that we follow the CDC guidance. And then finally, that, I'll conclude with this. One of my favorite philosophers, Mike Tyson, said, "Everybody has a plan till they get punched in the face." We've got these great plans. COVID nineteen, it's punching Louisville in the face right now. It's better to have a plan than not have a plan, but I think we would be very wise to heed Mr. Tyson's words. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Chris. I'm the last person, but I want to start with the, you know, we always get these questions while we are doing the meetings. So Board Member Marshall got one, and he didn't get it in time, so I'm gonna do the question that he received for first. That's the first thing I'm gonna do. The question is, "What is the plan for friskies?" Because they are not certified staff, but they are expected to work long hours in various capacities. I don't know who to give that to. Do I give that to Mr. Adams? Who, who takes care of the friskies? Is there someone on, on the screen that takes care of friskies?
Carmen, do you want to jump in on that?
Sure, I'll ask Dr. Avery to, to speak to that.
Is she here?
Yes, I am on here.
I'm sorry, I can't see everybody. She's just...
Yes, and, um, you're right, our, our friskies do, um, provide, um, they're part of the, um, administrative team as classified, and, and they provide, um, the support. I will, um, um, defer to, um, Mr. Adams as far as the compensation. But, um, they do provide, um, they work extensively to support our families. They've been doing it throughout our, um, pandemic, and they are part of the, um, team, um, and part of the reopening, um, plans to, um, help our, our students and our families, um, when we're ready to trans- transition back to in-person, um, they're part of that team.
So, I will add on the, um, extra service money that can be provided. First of all, we have told principals that any certified or classified personnel that they need to have work additional hours and time, uh, that the district would pay for that to meet the needs of whether that's entry or exit or lunch, or whatever that may be. Now, as, uh, our rules are that administrators do not have that, and friskies are considered from, on the administrator pay scale. We can give extra days to them, but not extra hours. We are willing to give those extra days, um, to support any school, and, and that would be mostly in the summer, we're willing to support that. Uh, but as we, I mean, friskies are some of the most important people that we have, and, um, obviously mean a lot to us. Last week was, uh, frisky week, and so, um, they're extremely important. And I think will even be more important moving forward because of meeting the needs of our kids.
Okay, should I move on, or is there more from Mr. Adams?
Anything else, Jimmy?
No, you may go ahead. Dr. Polio answered it correctly with the information.
Okay, thank you. Um, we have talked several times tonight about who's coming back and who's not coming back. And we've been told 60% want back, 40% say they don't, do not want back. I think we've had a breakdown of, um, what the, what the numbers look like, uh, by, by, uh, elementary, middle and high, by schools, by, um, race. I think it would be really helpful if we could really understand who wants to come back where. So we get a sense of how many students will be going to which schools, and what that composition looks like. And is that what you would use in order to get your bus, uh, routes together? Dr. Polio or Mr. Perkins or Mr. Robinson, how, how do, how are we determining what the bus routes will look like?
So, I can, you know, speak to, we can get you that data per school. I want, you know, that's as it stands right now of what, you know, we can give you a list of every school and the percent that are virtual and the percent that are in-person, um, so that you can see that. Obviously, that can change based upon the next few weeks as parents can go in, but I'll let Mr. Perkins speak specifically about the bus lines.
So, our, our bus routes are determined already, tho- those don't change, um, based on, on addresses. And because, you know, we have to anticipate, you know, potentially 100% students returning, uh, we're, you know, our bus routes are mapped out right now, uh, as if we're at full capacity. And so, once we know specifically which students, uh, are returning, there's, there, yes, there's an opportunity that maybe we could consolidate some of those stops. But we have to allow for the fact that, that enrollments may change from week to week based on preference of virtual or in-person, so, um, so i- it's, it's, it's a combination of looking at student needs based on bus stops and then availability of buses and drivers. So, but, but right now, like, we have our, our routes mapped out. The challenge is figuring how do we consolidate and condense those as much as possible, um, to still create flexibility, uh, to accommodate student needs based on, on where their addresses are.
Thank you. Uh, the video was very nice tonight, it was way cute with those children standing six feet apart. Those of us that live in, in Louisville, Kentucky, know that that was, uh, that was cute. I have never passed a bus stop that looked like that with elementary students standing six feet apart. So I don't know how we're going to convince them to do that, but that was a cute video. But I want to be real to anybody that's listening to that, that that is not the real world. It's a cute video, but I have never seen elementary students stand like that, but it was a cute video, I just want to say that, so.
Both the kids skipping out, and he skipped out of school at the end of the day, that was pretty cute too, so.
Say that, say that again, Dr. Polio.
Young man skipped out of school to get onto the bus at the end of the day, I thought that was pretty cute too.
Yeah, and it wasn't made during this, uh, 10-degree weather either, because somebody had on sandals. I paid, I paid attention to what they looked like, it, it was a very cute video, and it will make people smile. But I do not want people to think, if we go back to school, that they're going to pass a corner and you're going to see students standing like that waiting to get on the bus. But it has made all of us smile, we know that that is cute, but not necessarily real. So, so thank you for that, that's, that was very nice to see. And I'm saying all that to say, uh, I would like to know, not tonight, but at some point, if it is going to be necessary to put three students in a seat on the bus, especially elementary students or any student, because I do not think that that is a safe seating arrangement, and I have brought that up before. I don't expect the answer tonight, but I am not comfortable with seating three students together on the bus. The two students that were on the bus video, that was a great, that was great too. But we need to know for the safety of our students, if we are having to put three students in a seat on the bus. That was as, that was why I was asking, how many students are going where, what it will look like? As, and I realize that the numbers are fluid and flexible, but we, and everybody that's watching, they keep texting us, give us the facts. Give us the facts. So if the facts, we put them out there and we say they're going to change, okay. But less people are wanting some more specifics, or maybe I'm the only one getting those emails. But I don't expect an answer tonight, but I, I would like to put that out there, if possible, if we can take care of that. And my first question, uh, that, my first real question that I wrote down has to do with instruction. So I would like to know, as we, um, talk about virtual instruction, how and what will the quality of that look like for our students that are going virtual? And also, I have asked before, what will the quality of instruction look like for our in-school students? Because these students have not been with us since March, so what will we do in that period of time? What will that look like?
Dr. Coleman?
So first, um, what will the virtual, um, the school-based virtual option look like? That's going to look very similar, um, to what NTI is like now. Those same guidelines and expectations are in place for teachers, so very similar to now. For students in person, um, what, you know, what even a short time would allow us to do is to, to see where our students are, you know, to, to, to have them back and to be able to get them back into school routines. And, you know, and just to, just to let us make that kind of contact, um, again, um. A- and I think, you know, it, I mean, it would look very, very much like, you know, what we think about with, with being at school in person. Of course, with all the, the restrictions in place, but bottom line, you know, I think it would allow us just to, you know, to get an even better feel for our kids and, and where they are and what they need.
Will the assistant suits, uh, be, uh, working with virtual and in-person instruction too? So are they going in two different directions?
They will, they will, um, because the, the virtual option is a, you know, is a school-based option. So, so their schools, you know, will have both in place.
Okay, thank you. My next question has to do with ventilation, and the agreement that was signed on February the 14th. The statement says, "The district agrees to review and reasonably address issues with classrooms, workspaces that do not comply with COVID-related Health Department recommendations for ventilation." We have talked about that a little bit tonight, but I, I would like to understand better because, um, what are we truly doing as we move forward with the ventilation issue? So that there is a lot of discomfort in the emails about the ventilation in schools. And I hear you say that we are covering, uh, X number of schools, so could you be a little bit more specific? I guess that would, I would be asking Mr. Perkins, please.
Sure, I'll, uh, I'll tell you what I can speak to, and then, uh, Mr. Jones, if you're still available, you might want to chime in as well. So, Ms. Porter, we've got, you know, well over 160 some odd buildings, and specifically speaking to our schools, uh, all but 13 of them are on what, just in layman's term, I would call like an open-loop system, if you will, where they're continually bringing outside air, circulating air throughout the, the, the building. As, as Mr. Rich, um, from the Health Department said earlier, the two best ways, uh, to keep airflow exchanging in a building, one is through, uh, your, your air handling system, the other one is through windows. And so, what we've done is look at those 13 school buildings that we have, that, that are on like a closed-loop system, if you will. The dampers don't bring in fresh air, they've got other mechanisms to circulate air throughout the building, whether that's Univens, fan coils, uh, or some other type of, uh, air handling unit. Uh, out of those 13 buildings, we went room to room, inspected windows, there's, there are six classrooms in, in, in those 13 buildings total. Six classrooms that don't have windows, or don't have a mechanism to, to bring in adequate air exchange. So what we'd have to do is sit down with the principal, look at those specific rooms with them, to figure out what they're used for. Some of those classrooms may not even be used for a classroom, it could be used for a mul- a multitude of things. But there are six rooms on, on a building map that would be identified as a classroom in those 13 buildings in our district that don't have adequate, uh, airflow and don't have operable wind, or don't have windows actually. So, that, that's the plan right there. There are office spaces too, I think in those 13 buildings, there's a total of 19 rooms that, uh, are either identified as a storage room, uh, workroom, uh, and office. So 19 rooms of, of a smaller scale, uh, in those 13 buildings that, that again, don't have windows or a supply and return of air. So we'd be working with principals specifically at those schools to, to figure out how to best address their needs. Does that answer your question, or?
That's, that's, man, would you provide the board with a list of those 13 schools, so we know whether they're in our districts or not, please? That's not a tonight answer, just would you see that we get the list of the 13 schools?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Um, the next question I have has to do with instruction also, and I think, uh, this goes to our Chief of Schools. Can you talk about our EL teachers that are, are, some schools have point two teacher? So if we, and in, when we go back to in-person instruction, we're going to have, uh, the EL instructors going to maybe five schools? Would you speak to that, or is there going to be any modification of their teaching schedule?
I'm going to, uh, bounce that to Dr. Everett, uh, she gives our, uh, support for EL.
And we, um, have actually, um, we've provided some guidance, um, to our schools on, um, ELS and what that will look like in terms of, um, scheduling, um, teaching models, so, such as co-teaching and collaboration. And so, our, um, we're working at the district level with our schools and our, um, ESL teachers to, um, assist them with that.
Okay, thank you. Next question's about technology. The number of hotspots, you showed us that beautiful warehouse with everything in it. How many hotspots do we have available for new t- new students that will come to us? Do we have X amount on, in storage?
Yeah, Dr. Beltr, I think I'm going to answer this first, but I think almost every one of our hotspots are distributed at this point. Um, we've gotten those out. Uh, Dr. Beltr, do you have a number of what we have available?
Uh, you're correct, Dr. Polio, we've, um, deployed all of our hotspots, we had 12,000 this year, and we met with T-Mobile, uh, this past week about our, our plans moving forward.
So they are.
If somebody has moved into Jefferson County and needs to come to school and they need a hotspot, we don't have a hotspot, is that what you're saying? We don't have a reserve amount?
No, we currently do not.
Uh, Dr. Polio, I would like for you to, you all to look at that, because that, there will be absolutely no equity at all if somebody signs up to go to school with us and they don't have the ability to sign on without a hotspot. I don't need an answer tonight, but that, that's concerning to me, if, if that is, you know, if that's where we are, that's the fact. So I appreciate the honesty of it, but it, that answer concerns me a bit.
We can look into that and see if we purchase more, I mean, we did want to make sure that we had 12,000, and we got them out to every single family who wanted one. Um, and I think we saw on the, the heat map that, uh, we definitely focused on equity with that as well.
Okay, thank you. Um, another question that was sent to me, and this would go to, um, Mr. Perkins. Will there be back-to-school walkthroughs as we talk about, um, distancing and everything? Uh, the sinks working and the water fountains working, uh, for students, uh? Is there, because I was told that at some point, schools have, uh, a compliance officer that comes through to look at, to make sure everything is in place. Will that be done before we open, if we open schools?
Yes, answer your question, yes, that will be done before we open schools, and it'll continue to be done as, as schools are open. But tho- though we have started those informally, uh, we did those, um, well, we did those back in, uh, October, November, December, or central office facilities, just looking for building compliance. And then we took that tool, adapted it for schools specifically, so we could start doing like healthy at school, for lack of a better word, say, compliance, uh, site visits. So we've done that, uh, I think we've been out to a total of 26 schools so far, uh, just, just to see if our tool is adequate and collected the right data. Um, the, the thinking is, between our Safety and Environmental Office, we have three inspectors that are doing those right now. I've talked to, um, Mr. Moore, uh, Chief of Schools, to see if we collaborate with the Assistant Superintendent's Office and get now to all the schools to be able to provide principals' feedback to say, here's what we looked for, um, regarding compliance with those healthy-at-school guidelines, uh, here's what we've seen that we need to address before students come back, uh, giving principals' feedback on how to address those needs, and then coming back again for a follow-up visit, just to say, you know, you, you're all good to go, or we've noticed a couple more things, or, or we still need to work on this. So, to answer your question, yes, we will be out in school, we're making sure that, you know, they've, they've addressed things like social distancing. And you, you specifically were asking about water fountains, I don't know if you heard earlier, we were talking about, um, we've already gotten the wheels in motion to put water bottle fillers on each floor of the elementary schools, um, first, because of, I'd realistically probably be coming back to school before the middle and high schools, and then we'll be putting those in middle and high schools as well. And the sink thing that you mentioned last week, I was asking around, and, uh, uh, we went back and looked at work order logs as well, just to see are there sinks that are not functioning, uh, and I think there may have been some miscommunication, possibly in our part. When we first started social distancing, we were covering sinks up to make sure that two sink a- a- at one countertop, if you will, that were within six feet of each other, weren't being used at the same time for social distancing purposes. So in some cases, I think they, they put a bag over, they put a sign over, they may have put, uh, caution tape over it. So it, it may give the impression that the sink is not operable, we did that for social distancing purposes.
Thank you. The sink, uh, in the video was covered up with plastic also. The student washed their hands, but the sink next to it was covered up, uh, in plastic, so thank you for saying that. Uh, we have discussed tonight that we are looking for, uh, contracted services out to get people in place to take care of, if we are able to open school, or if the devote is, if the decision is made to open schools. So, what I understand that we are getting bus drivers, custodians, and am I clear that we need nutrition service workers? Or we don't need nutrition service workers, because we're providing lunches within the schools? And then we're also having to deliver lunches, because all, uh, all students, even virtual students, will receive, uh, lunches as well. So, do we need additional nutrition service workers also?
In addition to what we normally employ, no, w- we've got it figured out, so that, that's why we're going to serve those curbside meals for virtual enrolled students. When we go back to school, we'll be serving those most likely at middle and high schools, because they have a larger cafeteria staff, uh, to be able to kind of split their staff up between distributing lunches in the building and then some serving outside. So, you know, our, our current staffing allotment will, will allow us to be able to provide those services.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I received an email today from a substitute teacher, so when we have the, uh, Town Hall meeting, would we please address? I heard what was said tonight, but this, uh, email came from a substitute teacher that has not received anything lately about being a substitute. And there are lots of questions on here about pay and having to float from room to room. So if we could, if nothing else, put something online, so substitute teachers know what's available for them, uh, so I can, so we are being responsive to folks that want to work for us. I think that everybody's not getting the same information, please. The other question is, how many staff do we currently, how many staff have currently filed for FMLA or medical leave? And, um, Mr. Adams may have said that, but I didn't hear it.
I don't have those numbers for me right now, but I can get that and get it back to you.
I'm still not hearing it, I'm sorry. I'm still not hearing it. I'm sorry.
I don't have those numbers with me right now, but I can get that information and get it back to you.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. Can we talk some more about sanitizing the buildings? I brought that up at our last meeting, and I talked about buildings as well as school buildings. And I had sent some questions over. But is there a timeline, and are there dates next to each of the buildings that have been sanitized that are additional buildings where we have JCPS staff? Does that list occur, or is it available that shows us how every building has been sanitized and what the schedule is to do that? I guess that would be you, Mr. Perkins?
I'll speak to that, and Mr. Robinson, you can jump in if I leave something out. But yes, all buildings are clean and disinfected each day. And we've even gone so far, in addition to what's in the plant operator's handbook, to make sure we have very specific guidelines for all of our housekeeping staffs at all of our facilities. And these are standard operating procedures, just to clarify. And, you know, the plant operator's handbook is pretty lengthy, and so given the current state of the pandemic, these are kind of the, if you will, the non-negotiables. We've got to make sure these things are happening regularly, frequently, and then as needed. But as far as maintaining like documentation, you know, our plant operators maintain a log of things like when filters are changed, when additional supplies are ordered for inventory purposes, things like that. But again, if there's something specifically you're referencing, I'd be glad to get with the plant operator and find out, you know, if their needs aren't being met or if there are concerns that have been reported that we need to address.
Okay, that takes me to the other question about, which was asked last week of Dr. Moyer and Dr. White. When a staff person reports COVID and that person has worked in the office, there seems to be something more than wiping down the desk and the phone and the door frame. So can we commit to a more thorough sanitation or sanitizing of workspaces, particularly spaces where we have multiple people working, as opposed to what I heard last week? Wiping the desk, the phone, and the door frame, or those kinds of things? Is it possible to do more than that? That does not seem appropriate, particularly in rooms where we have multiple employees.
Are we talking about just routine cleaning? Or are you talking about if there's an issue where an employee has been sick or something? I wanna make sure I understand your question clearly.
The question is, if a staff member has been identified as having COVID and is working in their workspace? They are working in either a individual office or, in many cases, we have staff that are working at cubicles or working at tables in big rooms. My question is, after that has been identified, we are, by law, required to put something on the door saying that that has happened. I would like to understand if we can do a more thorough job of sanitizing workspaces, particularly if that person is no longer there, but there are other people that are available in that space that are working. That is my question.
Yes, absolutely. And if I was not clear on that last week, and I apologize. Yes, if it's been reported that an area, an office space, a classroom, a common area has been exposed to someone with that, that is presenting symptoms or that's been confirmed as having COVID, yes. And the first priority is that we make sure that the other employees are relocated until we get that area clean. We've ordered, we've created, actually, ordered signs to put on doorways, or if there's not a doorway in a very visible area to say, you know, don't enter this area. We don't wanna say it's contaminated, but something to the effect of that, you know, that it's been reported that this area has been exposed to the virus, do not enter until cleaned. And then once it has been cleaned and disinfected, yes, there'll be a sign on there saying, it's clean, it's good to go, welcome back. And yes, the huge for cleaning are more than just wiping down those high-contact surfaces. It's a thorough cleaning first to remove all debris and dirt, and then afterwards, it's going through and cleaning with the disinfectant. That listing of disinfectants that they're using, that's what we use.
Okay, that, I just ran out of time, so thank you so much for your answers. I think that, again, we all have our questions that we'll be sending in after the meeting is over. I'd like to thank everyone for your participation tonight, for answering our questions. I would say that I know that we want to move forward, but Board Member Craig mentioned a term, which I think was a very significant term, about confidence building. And I think that that is something that we are obligated to do as a district with all, not with some, but with all, because we are a team of many people that do the work. And so I would like for us to continue to answer questions, provide facts, but everybody needs to feel comfortable and confident in their work environment. And I think that it's bigger than two organizations. There are many people on the team, and I just feel that, as we talk about equity and doing for others, that we must do more for everybody. And the confidence level, we're working on it, but I think we can work harder. I'm not saying that we're not trying, because we are, but that's just my personal wrap-up statement. And before I call for the adjournment of the meeting, let's see, I made myself a note because I wanted to report as to why we, this afternoon at 1:11 is when I found out that Dr. Moyer was going to be with us tonight. So having said that, if that happens again, or we are having additional people that you don't know about, we will send the board an email to that effect. So I apologize that that did not happen, but just to let you know that that's when I found out this afternoon. And the other thing I would like to say before I call for adjournment is, I would be remiss if I did not give some recognition of Coach Scroggins, who was the principal at Central High School. So just sympathy to his family. He did a lot at Central High School. There are a lot of trophies because of Coach Scroggins. I mean, excuse me, he was not working there when he passed, but he spent a lot of time there. And just as it seems to me that something needs to be said tonight, because I don't know when everything will be finalized, but he has passed. And so I want to give him some recognition and some thank you for the work that he has done building strong teams, and those young people have gone on in life, so I just would like to say that. And according to my phone, it is 9:12 PM. So, I'm sorry, 9:20? Can't even read the phone. Is there a motion to adjourn at this time?
Marshall?
Thank you, Mr. Marshall, seconded by.
Greg.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. I will call for the vote of Board Member McIntosh.
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Shul?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Ms. Duncan?
Yes.
Thank you. Board Member Marshall?
Yes.
Thank you. Board Member Craig?
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Chris?
Yes, and I'd like to say hi to Ms. McIntosh's children.
Yes, plus, okay, Diane Porter, yes, yes. We are officially adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Be safe and try to stay warm. Dr. Polio, we need to get you some heat in that auditorium, okay? That's it, thank you. We're adjourned.